Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Will do.
Alderman Redpath. Alderman Sinore.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMeniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chair, McCormick is present. Okay, let me move a couple of things over here. The next item is the approval of the June 26, 2018 Committee Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, if you could give the two reports.
Thank you, Chair Tylin. The Corporate Fund had a beginning balance in the month of June of $3,176,420. We took in total receipts of $19,512,312. We totaled disbursements of $18,786,186. I don't have my readers on. And an ending balance of $3,902,546. The reason, Chair Tylin, for the large amount of receipts, the $19,512,000, and the disbursements of $18,786,000, is we received our first portion of the tax monies from the county, and then that was dispersed out to the police and the fire pension funds, just so you know what the large increase in dispersment was. Thank you, Chair Tylin.
Very good. And then, do we have any report on the debt owed to the city?
The debt owed to the city is going very well. We are working with the City Water, Light &amp; Power Commercial Office, and we're collecting, checking all vendors through the support of the Budget Director, because it's actually, according to ordinance, what he can support, not myself, but the checks cross my desk. So Director McCarty supported me in that, and every vendor that gets paid, both the Commercial Office and my office, checks for debt, and we're doing a very good job of collecting debt that way as well.
Very good. Do we need to approve either of those two reports?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Before we move on to item number five, the Office of Budget and Management Report, we received a delivery from the Office Inspector General. Do we have a Office Inspector General report today?
It's my understanding that Judge Holmes will be here at the City Council meeting.
So next Tuesday?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have an item missing from the agenda. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Office of Budget and Management Contract Report. Are there any questions? I do have one. I noticed that one of the items that we had previously had on there was a contract for someone who had come back and was working part-time with Convention and Visitors Bureau, but on the recent hiring report, that gentleman has now been rehired by the city. So was that, so that contract then would be reduced by the smaller amount of time, and then it would be canceled, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So what would the total amount spent on that contract? Because I think it was only $20,000 for the total amount?
Alderman, the amount spent on that was $7,500, so the remainder of it would go back into the corporation.
Okay, but the remaining contract is canceled?
Yes, absolutely. It is canceled.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on the OBM contract report? All right, the next item is presentations. I was not informed that we had any this evening. I'm hoping that's not why CWP is down in the front row. Sounds good to me. The next item on the agenda is ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, I'd also like to recognize Alderman Redpath. Thank you.
2017, 103, 2017, 266, 2017, 435, 2017, 436, 2017, 470, 2017, 489, 2018, 005, 2018, 110, 2018, 141, 2018, 247, 2018, 252, 2018, 285, 2018, 297.
It is my intention to move 2018, 297 onto the committee agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
What does that pertain to, Chris?
That is the NAPA contract that we put on back to committee because Director McCarty wasn't here the previous committee.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, unless anyone has any other items, I believe we can move on to items for committee consideration. Would you like to start with 297? Yes, please.
2018, 297, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of RFP VM 18-13 with Motorparts and Equipment Corporation DBA, NAPA Auto Parts, for a turnkey parts store operation in an amount not to exceed $4,950,000 from August 1, 2018 through July 31, 2021, for the Office of Budget and Management.
A motion?
Motion for debate?
Second.
We have a motion for the debate agenda and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, Phil, can you kind of give us a quick background on this, the whole process on this, and what, kind of what the comparisons were?
Going way back to the very beginning, the contract for NAPA originally was done through a joint purchasing agreement, like a buying-on-the-state contract, although it was a different government cooperative. The council approximately one year ago had expressed an interest or desire for us to go out when the original contract ended and do an RFP. And in the meantime, the original contract got extended per terms, the original terms of the agreement. In the last year or so or less, we have been working on the council's request to do an RFP, and we did one. And Cassandra Wilkin is here tonight, can talk about that. This process was actually spearheaded by Purchasing and Tim Weir, who is the new manager of the Garage. The process is pretty straightforward, much like all of the other RFPs that we do. We put it together, we put it out on the street, and then there was an evaluation team that went over all of the proposals that we received. In the end, we received three proposals. Two of them did have a local presence, NAPA and O'Reilly was another one. The third did not have a local presence, but all three were evaluated by the team. The team that was put together to evaluate consisted of one individual from Public Works, the purchasing agent, and two individuals from Fleet. None of the individuals on the team had anything to do and were not in their positions when the original NAPA contract was initiated way back at the advent of the Garage consolidation, and that was by design. We wanted a thorough, fair, and impartial evaluation of all the RFPs because of previous questions that had arisen. And I've asked those individuals who were on the team to come tonight, so if you have any specific questions for them, they would be here to answer those questions for you. In the end, they evaluated all of the proposals, and again, I'll let them answer the questions, but it was their determination through a scoring system that they did individually that NAPA was, in fact, the best way to go for the city, in the best interest of the city to continue with NAPA. The good thing that came out of this is that, in the end, even in staying with NAPA, the city did receive a price concession. The previous contract was cost plus 10 percent. The new proposal is for a cost plus 7 percent. So we avoid the disruption of changing. We get lower prices, and we continue to get away from some of the issues of the past in terms of parts obsolescence and all of that. So overall, I think the RFP process went good, or very well, but they are here to answer any questions that you have. As I mentioned, I really didn't have much to do with it. I tried to stay away from it, quite honestly.
And I realize the RFP doesn't go based on the lowest cost in all, in some cases. Is that, was the lowest cost bidder, did they win, or did they win just based on?
You are correct, Alderman, and not in all cases does an RFP end up with the lowest cost. It is determined what is in the best interest of the city is how an RFP is determined. However, in this case, NAPA is the lowest cost as well.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you for the people that did that, that worked on that committee, too.
All right, are there any other questions or discussion items on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor of the debate agenda?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take 2018, 252 out. I apologize for the delay in the motion, and move it into committee.
I would like to, a motion and a second, to take item 218, 2018, 252, out of the committee and put it into committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, can we go ahead and do it right now?
Yes. 2018, 252, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Anchors Away Corporation. Doing business has Anchors Away located at 518 East Capitol Avenue.
Move the debate.
Second.
That will come with, Mr. Chairman, that will come with some amendments according, as per Mr. Clerk.
Very good.
Just briefly, that is correct. You may recall that this was placed originally, or held in committee, actually requested the petition or the business, because they were going to end up changing their name, and there was going to be some change of ownership. That documentation has happened, so the ordinance will be amended with that updated information.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have item 2018, 252, for the debate agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Present.
One present. Mr. Clerk, if you could continue with the committee consideration ordinances.
CWP, 2018, 299, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW-19-05-22, cabin chassis with cargo hauler platform truck with drag scrubs equipment incorporated in an amount not to exceed $76,163 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 300, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of proposal number UE-18-12 with Ozenga Cement Incorporated for the purchase, removal, and beneficial use of fly ash from Dahlman IV for a three-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 301, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of proposal number UE-19-03, purchase of renewable energy credits in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for a five-year term with Three Degrees Group Incorporated for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? I do have one. In the past, when we've had energy credits, they weren't renewable energy credits, but they were other forms of credit. Can these possibly expire, or is this something that, once we get them, we have them?
So these credits, these are credits our customers buy to offset their energy with renewables. Once the customer buys this renewable energy credit, it is expired at that point.
Okay.
It is an offset, so they cannot be resold or reused.
So it's, once they are purchased, then it's done?
It's done, yes.
Okay, that is kind of what I was looking for. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 302, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount of $20,000 for a total amount not to exceed $45,000 to Barber Sagato Hoffey Wilkie and Ket LLC to provide legal services regarding Sangamon County Court Case Number 2013-MR-800, City of Springfield versus Ameren Illinois Company for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
And may I just address, I do, I would like just a brief executive session, if the committee has, if you don't mind it today or at the council meeting. I wanted to talk about this case and two or three others that are pending, that are, there are some ordinance on that I want to just talk through what the current status is.
So then we should entertain an executive session for pending legal matters, including this ordinance?
And pending probable imminent litigation, but it doesn't have to be right now. It could be at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think we ought to just go ahead and get it out of the way. Well, there's others that, items that need to be discussed, right?
Yeah, we will talk about 318, 319, and 321 are the four.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion for that and a second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will reconvene the regular meeting when we are finished.
I'm a no vote on the executive session. We had a motion on placing this on the consent agenda first, Chris, so I thought that's what we were voting on.
We, the consent agenda on this could be affected by the executive session, so we can't hold the vote until after we've had discussion and other items about this ordinance, and we are unable to have the discussion on this ordinance until we have the executive session.
That may be, but I never withdrew my motion for consent. We've got a lot of folks out here, they're here for ordinances. We might be behind those doors for an extended period of times. I ask for consideration for the public.
I understand, however, I am chairman, and we're going to go in the order that I set. Thank you. Motion to reconvene from executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion and a second for consent agenda. Any discussion?
We're on ordinance 2018.
2018, 302. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 303, an ordinance approving a funding increase in amendment to number one to the agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated for engineering services to design support in Dahlman Power Plant Unit Number 33 Flue Gas E-sulfurization Hydroclone Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $165,667 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer.
Has this gone out for bid at all? Or is this, this is just an ongoing, this is an ongoing?
This is an ongoing project. They've been working on, yes. It's due some more work.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did, I just saw that.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 304, an ordinance authorizing the technical support and maintenance for PUI Historian Software for the Dahlman Power Plant Electric Generation Department from Ozzie Soft LLC in amount not to exceed $60,231 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 305, an ordinance authorizing annual software maintenance support for the supervisory control and data acquisition system with Open Systems International Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $64,757 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 306, an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended regarding electric utility rates for the electric vehicle charging rate 71 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Public Works, 2018, 307, an ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for the performance of transportation work under the Unified Planning Work Program from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 in an amount not to exceed $38,241, MFT Section Number 18-00300-00-ES for the Office of Public Works.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 308, a supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $69,530 may be used for land acquisition for the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects, MFT Section Number 18-00478-00-VR for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for omnibus consideration, ordinance is 2018, 308 through 2018, 313, which all pertain to Springfield Rail Improvement Project.
Second.
We have a motion for omnibus for 2018, 308, 309, 310, 311, 312, and 313 for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
2018, 309, an ordinance authorizing payment of $8,100 to Patricia R. Grady for purchase
of portion of one parcel located at 2506 Burton Drive and authorizing disposal of 1,674.75 square feet of excess right-of-way area at 2500 Burton Avenue for the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. 2018, 310, an ordinance authorizing purchase of one parcel of real property from trust member TLT 510 in an amount of $20,600, disposal of 13,088.36 square feet of excess right-of-way area being a part of PIN 22-04-point-zero-four-eight-four-zero-one-nine, and closing costs not to exceed $1,000 for the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. 2018, 311, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the transfer of real property located at 609 Princeton Avenue from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects. 2018, 312, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses to Brenda S. Painter in an amount of $3,630 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. 2018, 313, an ordinance authorizing purchase of one parcel in an amount of $36,200 in temporary construction easement located at 2222 South Sixth Street from 2222 South LLC relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for omnibus consideration. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 314, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of contract PW-17-02 from August 31, 2018 to July 31, 2019 with Rex D. Evans, aka Evans Carthage, for branch and yard waste disposal services and authorizing additional payment of $331,087 for a total amount not to exceed $662,174 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Turner.
Over the past several months, I think all of us have heard complaints and concerns from residents that have taken materials to Evans with regard to payment and the, you know, confusion around that. So I would ask that, and I know that you guys are working on it, and every time you have a complaint, you call them and get it straightened out, but I would ask that the contract be very specific as to what is required from, with regard to payment and those types of things.
It is fairly specific. I think what happens sometimes is whoever's working there, from time to time, there's been a couple of issues, as you're aware of, and we try to deal with those accordingly. They've been pretty responsive when we tried, when we corrected it, and we tried to explain to them. It gets a little challenging because there's so many people coming in and out of there, and sometimes you'll have contractors that come in and out and try to offload stuff there that's not really part of our program. So, but we'll reiterate with them again that to be very careful, especially with the way they treat city residents. We go over that with them from time to time.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018, 315, an ordinance authorizing purchase of a 2019 International 7400 service truck from Rush Truck Centers of Illinois Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $177,229 under state contract number PSD-4018132 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Finance, 2018, 316, an ordinance authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with the Young Men's Christian Association of Springfield, Illinois YMCA, for the redevelopment assistance for a property located at 701 South Fourth Street utilizing Enos Park and Central Area Tax Increment Finance Funds in an amount not to exceed $5,900,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for debate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the debate agenda. Is there any discussion? Alderman Senior.
Is there anyone, are we going to let people speak tonight, or do we want them to come back next week? What's your pleasure, Chairman?
It's up to them. If they'd like to address the committee, I'd welcome that now, or if they'd like to wait till next week at council, that's fine, too.
So if there's anyone that wants to speak, okay.
Please come on up.
You guys going to dance and do the YMCA thing?
There's four of them. Which one's the Indian?
Before they get started, I attended the EDC meeting, had a very good discussion. Everybody thinks it's a wonderful project, but there were some concerns addressed, and just so, Joe, if you could bring out those concerns in your talk, I'd appreciate it, so they don't have to be repeated again.
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you very much, sir.
Be happy to.
I'm Joe Hurwitz. We are the developer, Hurwitz Enterprises is the developer of the YMCA. We have been engaged by both Memorial Hospital and the Y. I've asked Angie Sewell to attend. She is the executive director of the Y. And Paul Wheeler. And Paul Wheeler is the architect of record for the development of the Y. As you're all probably aware, we are in control of the real estate at the Northwest Corner of Fourth and Carpenter. It's approximately 118,000 square feet, and we have a project designed that is about 87,500 square feet. It'll be at the cost of approximately $35,700,000.
We would like one additional copy for council coordinator.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you have another one, Mimi?
You know what, Chris, we'll need to email that. And what we've, what we've done is I've provided a narrative on the project outlining the benefits that will accrue to the city. We feel that this is a transformational project for Carpenter Street, the Medical District Corridor, and we think that, based upon the interest level that we've had, we feel not only will it be transformational for all the employees that work in the area, because there's approximately 10,000 that work within three blocks of this location, we also think that it'll be transformational for the Enos Park neighborhood, and we feel we've already had some interest from some workforce housing people that feel that this type of facility adds enough of an amenity where people would want to live, in fact, in this area. With that being said, some of the concerns that were raised today, there were some concerns that I'll probably have Angie answer relative to moving the Y from the area that's in today, and have we considered the people that, in fact, we're moving this project away from? And what our thoughts are on that issue is that we think there will be definitely good public transportation to and from this location. We have not negotiated to date with the Springfield Mass Transit District, but we feel comfortable that we can have a bus stop at or near the entrance to this facility. We're working through several issues as we speak to acquire the appropriate amount of parking, and we're comfortable with the Enos Park Neighborhood Association support that we'll be able to acquire the appropriate amount of ground. The other, I guess, issue on the table that we've all read about in the paper, there was some concern raised today relative to the raising of the old Y. We are firmly committed in the agreement with the city that we will, in fact, raise the Y. It is, it is functionally obsolete. It is a very difficult building to navigate. The cost to rehab and bring it back up to today's standards with all of the requirements of the federal government and the city and the state of ADA and all those kind of issues, it's just cost prohibitive. We have all probably participated at the Y at some point or another. It's, you know, a lot of things, great things happen there, but it's time. It's time for a transformational-type project to happen, and we think that the Med District and this area is the perfect spot to have. And we think that the Med District and this area is the perfect spot to have it. As an overview, I'm watching the clock. As an overview, that's an overview. If anybody has any questions, I have Angie to answer operational questions and Paul to answer questions as it relates to facility questions. So I would open it up.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, just quickly, please add me to the source as a co-sponsor if you can. Because you do, your statement's a hundred percent correct. This will revitalize, help continue revitalize this into town, and appreciate you bringing it forward. My particular question is geared towards the city. Just quick, can you go through the funding breakdown between the two TIFs? Because I don't see it in the ordinance or redevelopment agreement attached to the ordinance here.
Essentially, and I don't know if Val wants to address this also, but essentially it'll be a 50-50 split between Enos Park TIF and the Downtown TIF. They join, so we're allowed to do what is called porting. That is share money back and forth between the TIFs based on the policy decisions that the city council makes. And the thought process is that the payments actually will be over a period of years, so it's not going to be all in one part. The developers, the Y has indicated that there will not be a request for a draw until all funding is in place, which is, all the financing is in place, which is traditional for the city, because our agreements require proof of the ability to proceed. So the first draw, partial draw that would be made at the earliest would be next late spring or perhaps summer based on their current project, which includes basically a preliminary groundbreaking in the fall, but actual full construction in late spring. In the meantime, they're going to finalize both tax credits, their fundraising, and their bank financing. The hospital, as we understand, although I've not seen the paperwork, has committed $9 million to the project. They're asking the city to proceed to put in place, however, ours is contingent on those other items being concluded.
Follow-up question. So with the Enos Park portion, I had a verbal, I guess a verbal commitment that not more than half of the revenue that goes to the Enos Park TIF would be used for this project. Is that going to be adhered to?
Yes.
Okay. That finishes my question.
One of the factors that was addressed today, just very briefly, the city's request will be to extend the Enos Park TIF. So the discussion has been, and was actually at EDC, or EDC today, was a discussion about at no point would it be in excess of one-half of their, you know, annual increment, which is what the Enos Park Neighborhood Association indicated that they were very comfortable with.
Great. Well, thank you much, and thank you for bringing it forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hurwitz and representatives of the Y, I think this is an exciting project. It's going to change the Enos Park area and revitalize even further this area and really make a heck of a contribution to this community. And I appreciate the vision, the foresight, and all the hard work that has gone into it. So my question, I wanted to say that first. My question really is, I guess, to Corporation Council. Can we get a copy of the redevelopment agreement?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
No, circulated, yeah.
And I guess that will probably answer my next question is, it's roughly $6 million. I just wanted to see what the eligible costs, the sources.
The, one of the, there is a draft of the, if you will, costs, but they're all set out by statute.
Right.
You know, the statute says that they're very limited. They cannot pay for new construction. There's been a lot of discussion about what's eligible. The soft cost, any kind of infrastructure, property acquisition, you know, design cost, things related to, well, construction interest is an eligible item, but it cannot pay for specific construction itself. But all of the ancillary things are proper under the TIF statute. And they've estimated, based on their budget, that they're somewhere in the range of about, I think, around $7 million of what they think is eligible.
That's correct.
However, in the final analysis, all of that documentation will have to be submitted in order to be reimbursed, because it's a reimbursement arrangement, not a, not pay-as-we-go. In other words, it'll be, they'll have to expend the money, come back, and then show that they were in the proper categories. And in this case, the TIF funding is about 16% of the overall project. Typically in the past, we've, I think, gone as high as 33 maybe, or 30 to 35%. So in this case, it's limited to the 16%, and depending on how the tax credits come in, the TIF amount may actually go down. So that's part of the process, that there is an obligation or a, if you will, an agreement that the current thought is that, I think in your pro forma, you estimated about five, it may be two or three. And however, it may be possible to go above five, in which case there would be, anything above five would be basically split on the tax credits would be split, so that would reduce the TIF amount. And we should know all of that by next year, once all that is done.
Correct. We're in the process of working through, just as an overview first, and I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Zirkel said. Our group and my company, I've been in this town for 40 years. I can assure you that this project will not take off unless we're fully funded. We've never failed on a project, and this would be the one, we guarantee you, we will not fail at this point. So there's a lot of hoops to jump through. There's fundraising. We're in the process of, the $9 million by Memorial is committed. If this project takes off, it's committed. The $5.9 million, hopefully, you all see your way fit to commit that number. Mr. Zirkel is correct that we've agreed that if we can get more than $5 million of tax, new market tax credits, for every dollar over that, we will take 50 cents off the $900,000. So we could shrink this down to $5 million even, if we're lucky enough to work through the tax credits. But these are all things that happen in tranches, so there's lots of complicating factors that we're working through at this time. We're very comfortable, we're working on philanthropic gifts of hopefully $7 million. That is a key component to make this project a reality. But Angie's already often started very, very strongly. We're confident it can happen. But again, all these things have to fall in place for us to make the TIF effective.
I, just as a follow-up, and thank you for that answer. Again, supportive of the project, don't have a problem with it. But when we have large TIF projects like this coming forward, or any significant requests, I would just really appreciate it if you can't meet with, whether it's the staff and economic development or Corporation Council or the mayor, if you can't meet with each individual Alderman or a couple of us at a time, at least meet with Tim Griffin, so that we can be brief. Because this is the first, any type of detail whatsoever, I think any of us, except for maybe Alderman Senior, because he was at the EDC earlier today, has heard about the project. Wonderful project.
Thank you, Ken. Alderman Senior.
I have two questions, sir, so if you bear with me. I hate to tell everybody about I swam at the Y back in the 60s. That's kind of like a long time ago. Based on the what-if statement, and this is probably more for the corporate council, Mr. Zirkel, based on the what-if statement of extending the Enos Park TIF, how sure or how certain are we that that will be come to fruition of extending that TIF? Or does anybody in here have an answer for that?
No, I think, the mayor may want to speak to that or Val, but the, if you will, the thought process is to apply like we have with others, like most recently East Side TIF, Far East TIF, to proceed with the requesting an extension. However, if that doesn't happen, then the Downtown TIF will have to pay the remaining amount or whatever amount is responsible. So it's, there's a fallback plan, if you will. The Downtown TIF has a, basically an unobligated balance, and again, Val could speak to this, but somewhere in the range of 20 or 22 million over the remainder of the life of the TIF, you know, through the next 10 years. So part of this, once we know how all the funding, if all the funding, when it all comes together, then the payments would be over a period of, right now, I think our thought would be over four. I think their preference is over three years, so it's going to be spread over a period of years, not as a lump sum.
Okay, and then the bigger question I have is after the, you move out of the old building and the old Y is there, and you move into the new building, what's going to be the disposition of that building and then the land? Because I don't think the city should, and this is probably not for you, but I don't think the city should be in the real estate business and will have another block that we have to do something with as a city. So mayor, Mr. Zirkel, what would our recourse be then? What would our course of action?
Alderman Senior, our commitment in the project is to raise the building. At that point, the concept that we've discussed is to provide it at no cost to the city to dispose of in a manner that was hopefully beneficial to the Dana Thomas House. That has not been finalized at this point, but there's lots of discussions that are happening at this point from the perspective of additional parking. I mean, we understand there's 25,000 visitors a year. They have not accepted it. Those discussions have not gone far enough where I can guarantee you that in fact will happen. Conceptually though, we are obligated to raise the building, and we will not leave the building standing.
Okay.
So that's part of the obligation.
That's a big concern of mine, because I don't want us to have another
Right.
piece of land that we're trying to figure out what to do with. I want that all put into the plan, so once we get, you get started with the project, which I think is a wonderful project, that we know from start to end what's going to happen and what the disposition of that land is going to be once you finish with moving out of that building.
You have both our commitment tonight, and it's also in the development agreement. So we are committed to handle that, and that is part of the financing that has to be in place for us to pull the trigger. It will absolutely be raised.
Okay, but I know what it's raised, but after we, you raise it and give it to us, which we need to have, I want to have a plan in place to do something with that land once the building is raised. So I understand.
Over my pay grade.
That's why I was directing that to the mayor and Mr. Zirkel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can discuss it more next week, but really, this is the opportunity. And the Y project, as what's been discussed, is transformational. It's all about connectivity. It connects Enos Park to the downtown. That's what it's about. It connects Dana Thomas House to downtown with that 4th Street corridor. So that block, even though there's concerns, you need that opportunity. So that shouldn't be the albatross around the YMCA project moving forward. I mean, that's going to be a win-win for everybody, especially the medical community. And Michelle Higginbotham's not here, but she's the president of Enos Park. But she even stated that she felt the housing, multifamily unit housing or other development will soon follow. Because you have the workforce with regards to medical community there. You have the, what's happening in Enos Park itself. And this is one, another avenue that adds to that quality of life in Enos Park, but also with regards to downtown, so it's a real win-win. But with regards to the project, there's not going to be any certainty, as we know with the current YWCA block, the Y block. And I'll just speak to that. I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors this year, and there's Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, and they were receiving about $25,000 to $50,000 in sales tax revenue. And right now, they're receiving $400,000 of sales tax revenue. And how they did it was through TIF. And it wasn't through providing incentives to businesses. They started with water features downtown and other landscaping amenities, beautifying the area. And they got pushed back because they're using TIF funds for those non-taxable items. But it transformed the area. And so, you know, here we have a private entity that offered up $9 million to develop that area on the Y block. And that's, you know, still in discussion with other opportunities, and that's private dollars. And that, one of the reasons I brought it forward was to free up TIF funds for other buildings, other development to happen. So that's what we have to weigh as a city and as a city council, what's the right move forward. But I encourage everybody to read the Business Journal with the Addams Family article. It talked about the businesses on Adams Street and how they're working together. And the telling line for downtown was Springfield, there's two amenities that downtowns that are thriving have, and Springfield does not have either. And it's the water feature, and it's the university presence downtown. And both of those items were where we're trying to move on that Y block. So you have to have that opportunity, and that's, is what this project allows us, is it affords us the opportunity to really transform 4th Street. It's going to transform Enos Park and downtown. And 4th Street, remember, that leads up to the mansion block, the Jackson Street corridor, and the other Y facility, that block. So all that's transpiring right before we, before our eyes, and we just need to put the pieces in place. And all comes down to dollars. That's the scarce resource to make it happen. So we appreciate the independent fundraising going to happen, and also with Memorial Health Services and their commitment, and many others that will be committed. And a key component, going back to your TIF. We are going to try to extend the Madison Park Place TIF. We've been successful 100%, knock on wood. But there's no guarantees, but we just did the Far East TIF, thanks to Alderman Turner. But when we tried to extend the Downtown TIF, when we went to the legislature, we said, that's never going to happen. This never happened in the history of the state of Illinois where they granted a double extension. Well, we got it done through our lobbying efforts and really showing the need for the area. And that's what it's all about, and it's a credit to the taxing bodies and the city council moving in that direction. So we intend to do the same with Madison Park Place. I'm sorry, not Madison Park Place, but Enos Park. But if it doesn't happen, we have to think of what, the what-ifs, and that's where the Downtown TIF, that renewal, is crucially important, because without that double extension, we wouldn't be talking about this project in the realm that we're talking about it today.
Alderman Senior, if you finish.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I support the project, but I want to make sure that all blocks are in place and we know where we're at when we're there, and that when we get to point A, point B, point C, and point D, that everything locks in together like a good jigsaw puzzle.
And we concur.
And we don't want to leave anything out. So I want to discuss, make sure everything's discussed.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Mr. Hurwitz, thank you for bringing this to us. Obviously, I've worked with you over the years, and you always bring quality projects to the city. Congratulations to Memorial and to the administration for everybody's efforts in putting this thing together. And I wish you would get involved in some more projects downtown, because we, there's a couple on Monroe, and there's one over by the mansion, if you would. But congratulations, always great projects, and congratulations to the mayor and his team for working with you guys to put this thing together.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Alderman DiCenzo.
I just have one question. The YMCA is a nonprofit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there will be no increment generated from this project?
That is correct.
Okay, just to be clear.
But it also will create, how many jobs, Joe?
Well, it'll create, and I'm going to let Angie handle that. Let me step back just for one minute, Alderman DiCenzo. The, while it doesn't directly create any increment, there's $35 million worth of economic activity in the community. And probably way more importantly, there's already interest by several developers. I've been asked by different people to help with some workforce housing. I have some meetings on Thursday on that. People have said that this type of facility is instrumental in having the developers that are in fact good at that kind of project come in, and it becomes transformational for the neighborhood. So while there's no direct increment, there's a significant amount of economic activity. And long-term, the quality of life and people that move into the neighborhood will continue to create additional increment.
And I don't disagree with that. I think it's a great project. That wasn't my point at all. We have just caught a lot of heat as a council for
Absolutely.
contributing to projects and approving TIF money for nonprofits, so.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you. And if I didn't answer it correctly, or in an aggressive fashion, I apologize. Angie, why don't you handle?
And the bottom line is, this is a stimulus. It's going to be the biggest thing to happen to that part of town ever.
And job-wise.
Since Lincoln parked his horse over there. So we got to, you know, we just got to keep moving.
He parked his horse in Ward 6.
And if not the Y, then what entity could come in and do a project this big and serve as many people and transform the community? I mean, that's the thing too. In terms of jobs, we employ 566 people right now. Majority of them are our part-time. We have about 182 full-time equivalent positions, and we expect that to grow by 50 or 70, depending on the number of programs and program areas that we develop. But that increase in jobs definitely going to be there. And we're a good first-time employer for people. We have jobs where you're not required to have a college education. I mean, we have a lot of good employment opportunities for people in the workforce who don't have good options now.
My comment was not a slam on a project.
No, and I didn't mean, yeah, I didn't take it that way, absolutely not. I think there was a question about the jobs, though, so yes.
We're the ones who have to vote for it, and we're the ones who have to hear about it.
Understood.
Okay.
Alderman Proctor again.
Yeah, just really quick, because yeah, can I echo that? Yeah, for granted, it's not going to generate property tax, but it's going to have a domino effect, I think, throughout the rest of Enos Park, and Lincoln Park and downtown. Because in Enos Park, we've always been waiting for that domino to fall, and we always thought maybe the new construction of a house, and that would help raise the property values, and that'll trickle more, so that more houses get rehabbed and more new development. But I think this will be that large domino that's going to fall, and then the other dominoes are going to continue to fall, and it's just going to reverberate throughout the rest of the area. And it's not just Enos Park that's going to benefit. I'm getting a lot of enthusiasm from Lincoln Park and the surrounding areas and downtown. They're all excited about this thing, because it's going to be great for the north end. So again, appreciate you bringing it forward.
Alderman McMenamin.
The project will, the new construction, ultimately, the value will, the physical value will end up in Enos Park area and not in the Downtown TIF. But the Downtown TIF will contribute significantly from city TIF funds. So the question is, has Downtown Springfield, Inc. So the question is, has Downtown Springfield, Inc. expressed an opinion about the project and the use of downtown TIF money? The answer is Downtown Springfield, Inc. has not been asked? Does your board meet at any time in the near future?
Next meeting.
Thank you.
Alderman Hannah.
Yeah, thank you. Joe, I want to commend you on this project. I spent a lot of time from the time I was nine years old to senior in high school, looking at Lane 4, at the black line on Lane 4 and the pool there. And I know there's been some concern about people wanting to, you know, about not raising the building and that. And I can tell you that back then, and that was 40 years ago, when trains went by, that place shook. And so I could just imagine what it does now. And so I do think that it's a good thing. I'm sure that the membership has dropped because of, not, not just because of the West Side Y, but, but because of the conditions of the building. And I mean, I'm, I can't wait to see the new one. I think it's, it's a big boom for the Enos Park area and that area of town. And I do want to bring up that, you know, the Y traditionally has done a great job of doing other community charity work. They've always been big on that. And from the time I was a kid, kid there, I remember, you know, a lot of the older guys there doing, doing things. So I think it's a good project and I commend all of you.
I would like to also be added as a sponsor and the reason behind it is this. I have two young children and they sign up for a lot of the summer camps. I know that we have taken some, them to some of the ones at the West Side. We've also done some of the ones downtown. And I know on particular days that I've gone to pick my, my son up from Star Wars camp or the airplane one that you guys did where you were throwing the paper airplanes and the kid who got out the farthest was the winner for the day and things of that nature that you guys have done, which are great for the community. There were days where your air wasn't working. And I remember last year, there was a day where you, you, there was some concern by some parents about whether or not to leave their children because the inside of the building was so warm. And a lot of the discussion here, that we've talked about all kinds of different aspects and I'd just like to throw in the idea of the aspect, from a community standpoint, you guys do a ton for children. You have the summer camps, you have the sports, you have different programs after school, everything else. And I think the kids deserve a top-notch facility downtown as much as they do on the West Side.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Just to toot our own horn a little bit, we serve over 17,000 kids under the age of 18 last year in 2017. We put a half a million dollars back into the community in terms of financial assistance. So people who could not afford to pay their own way to participate in programs got subsidies so that they could belong to the Y and participate as well. You know, 3,100 kids and their families participated because we removed the financial barriers. 300 weeks of summer camp are given away to kids of low income. I mean, we do, we do consider ourselves a charity, a social service organization. And sure, there's the fitness aspect of it. We want people to come and to be healthy and become healthier in their life and live that, live that life in a better way because of that. But what we give back to the community and do for the kids, and when you're talking about investment, you look at the kids in that neighborhood and that area and, I mean, it's one of the poorest school systems, the McLernan School, the highest transient rate of any school in District 186. 33% of the kids that start school there do not finish school there. They've moved. Well, to have a program like the Y and somebody that could come in and help those kids and provide positive leadership and a safe place to go, I mean, the, the investment in that is immeasurable.
Exactly. Which is why I fully believe with what Mr. Hurwitz said, that Springfield Mass Transit will definitely work with you to get a bus stop and get things taken care of. The, the public transportation side of it will fall into place when needed. Any further discussion from the Aldermen? Is there anyone in the crowd who is here to speak on this ordinance today? I have a motion and a second for the debate agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018-317, an ordinance authorizing additional payment of $75,000 under contract CS-17-05-27 with Black &amp; Company Masco Packaging and Industrial Supply Incorporated and Triad Industrial Supply Corporation for the purchase of janitorial supplies from August 1st, 2016 through July 31st, 2019 for the Office of Budget and Management for a total amount not to exceed $240,000.
I'll take a motion.
Motion for consent. Second.
We have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018-318, an ordinance approving an additional amount of $50,000 for a total amount not to exceed $135,000 to Drake's, Narup, and Mead P.C. for Randall, A. Mead to provide legal services regarding Sangamon County Court Case Number 2008-L-176, Mary Yarborough individually and as administrator of the estate of Eric Jones versus the City Water, Light, and Power in the City of Springfield.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
President.
Noted.
2018-319, an ordinance authorizing additional $10,000 for a total amount not to exceed $55,000 to Hasselberg, Greby, Snodgrass, Urban, and Wentworth to defend a limited number of workers' compensation claims for the City of Springfield.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018-320, an ordinance asserting the prevailing rates of wages for Sangamon County as required by the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
General City Business, 2018-321, a resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing and consideration proposing an amendment to Chapter 155, Section 155.001 pertaining to the definition of family.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Can you explain what this is about, please?
This has to do with a request to modify the definition of family in relation to our zoning definitions. And this will go to the Planning Commission in order to make a record and then eventually we'll come back to the city council for final review.
But why? Why is, why are we, why do we need the, why do we need this? Is there, we have a case pending or something? What's going on?
Alderman, Mr. Chair.
Corporation Council.
This is one of the matters that we had discussed, you know, earlier in the executive session relating to the issue of a fair housing case that is now pending.
Never mind. Got it.
And again, this is a, just to very briefly discuss, this is our normal process for reviewing any kind of zoning matters and therefore it will go to the Planning Commission where there'll be a public hearing and discussion and record. It will eventually come back to the city council for a final discussion and debate.
My fault. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Turner.
I just want to, I know you said this like three times, but I just want to confirm for everyone that this is a resolution and voting on its passage does not mean that the ordinance related to this issue is going to change. There will be a subsequent possible ordinance and vote on whether to change the city code as it relates to this issue.
That is exactly correct. You may recall that our process, both by statute and by city code, anytime there is a zoning modification, which this is, has to go through a public hearing process, Planning Commission. So this resolution is simply referring that to the commission. Commission will hold a hearing and will come back as a zoning docket, in which case the city council would have to make a final decision.
I just want to make sure that no one misinterprets the vote as it's making a change now to the city code.
Alderman Proctor.
I guess you can, can you describe the change they're making? Because we have a number of homes operating as unregulated group homes and halfway homes because they utilize the five.
This is a matter, really, we need to wait for the public hearing so that the, if you will, the information can be presented to the Planning Commission. There'll be a summary of all the testimony and then that will come back to the council.
So you can't say what's in the ordinance?
It changes the definition of family to mere provisions that we found with other cities, specifically City of Evanston. And we believe that this modification is consistent with both existing law and new case law that has occurred.
Guess we'll talk later.
I think the appropriate time will be when it comes back from zoning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
2018-322, an ordinance amending Chapter 97 by adding Sections 97.10 and 97.11 regarding linked library grounds.
Mr. Clerk, I am making a motion to split the ordinance into two items, to have item 2018-322 continue on as closure of library grounds to the public and a new ordinance of 2018-325 be added to the agenda to deal with the making smoking and tobacco products prohibited at the library grounds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to split the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrying on with the new ordinance 322, which has the same title? Nope, new title. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the, the new 2018-322.
An ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the 1988 Springfield Code of Ordinances amended by adding Section 97.10 regarding closure of the Lincoln Library grounds to the public.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to be removed as a sponsor on 322 and left on 325, please. Discussion, starting with Alderman Donilon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question really relates to sort of the fundamental text that's in the spirit of the ordinance as it relates to, just on a technical basis. And my question is to Corporation Council, what, who's in charge of setting the hours for the library proper right now?
That would be either through the executive department, either through the board making a recommendation, even the director or with the mayor's approval to modify the hours. This, this particular ordinance is addressing a recommendation that came via the library by way of the hours. So presently, the administrative aspect is set, you know, sets the hours of operation.
Okay, so the answer is the executive branch. And I took a look at the city code, believe it or not, I get bored at night and I do read it on occasion. And it specifically says that the mayor shall exercise control over all appointed offices and supported departments set forth in Section 32.05 of the code and all officers and employees therein. It says he, we should probably change that in the future, so he or she, he shall have the, have charge and supervision over all property, buildings, and equipment, and so on and so forth. So I guess really, my question is, it's not the council's responsibility, it's not the legislative branch's responsibility to set the hours of the grounds and/or the buildings the City of Springfield has control of. Would you agree?
This, in other words, are you asking, would this be a proper exercise of legislative action? The answer would be yes.
Well, what I'm getting at is, let's just hypothetically say that we, as a council, decided that we wanted to change the hours of a building or grounds that the executive branch did not agree with. Would the answer be the same thing?
I think it would depend on the exact circumstances. The purpose, the purpose of this is to give very specific policy adoption and notice. And one of the processes, if you notice through the city code, there's a lot of different very specific directions to departments and operations and so on. And this matches some similar provisions that we found with other libraries.
Well, I appreciate that, but as you know, the city, having been intricately involved in the establishment of the form of government we have now, the consent decree essentially says the same thing. The mayor has the authority to exercise control over all city offices and departments and so forth. So I guess what I'm getting at is, I intend on, if we do have a vote on this ordinance this evening, I'm voting no because I don't see it as one of our, we don't have jurisdiction or responsibility over setting hours on the grounds of the, of the library or, quite frankly, anything, any other city property. That's the mayor's. I mean, certainly welcome the conversation and working with the executive branch on these issues, but I intend on voting no for that purpose, for that reason.
Mr. Chair. Alderman Proctor, then. Go ahead, Alderman.
Yes, the library is located in Ward 5. I want to state that I oppose, I oppose this ordinance because I don't think it'll be effective. I don't think there's a long-term plan to address the homeless issue that we have in Springfield. And I think it's wrong to tell people to leave a place where they've decided is safe without telling them an alternative. And so for that, I just, I just don't think this thing would work. And there's a number of people here that want to address this and I believe we should probably provide them the opportunity to talk about this ordinance as well.
I'll be glad to do that when the Aldermen are done speaking.
Definitely. Thank you. And then I addressed, I asked this question yesterday and I still haven't gotten a response. Why is it the city's belief that this ordinance of past would not open us up to a lawsuit given new state rules regarding homeless bill of rights?
Not new.
And, or well, okay, yeah, it's still there. It's there. It's been there for a while. So why, why do they, why does the city feel this will not open us up to a lawsuit? I feel it's very clear it will. And then two, what's the city's position that this would not jeopardize federal HUD funding? Because previous administrations have said that if cities take approach to criminalize homeless, it opens up to loss of federal dollars to address social service issues. So I'd like an answer for those two questions, please.
I guess, just to add a partial question to the second part there, I don't believe the ordinance actually addresses homeless at any point. It's just closing the grounds. It's not.
It's the public debate that has occurred because of this ordinance that is creating the framework for why this ordinance is being discussed.
All right. Mayor and Mr. Zirkel, if you'd like to respond to the questions.
Just briefly, I did look at the statute that you had been, that you had forwarded and this ordinance does not violate that statute. The plain language of the ordinance does not discriminate or isolate a certain population. And this is, in a way, similar to, you may recall, the issue with panhandling question where that had been directly related to a certain activity. However, the replacement ordinance, you may recall, that was drafted, that applies to all, has not been challenged and in fact, I think has been actually accepted by the plaintiff's attorneys. So this language, this specific language, is very similar to, for example, what the park district has done with some of their parks where they will close, you know, certain areas. There is a United States Supreme Court decision directly on point that allows public facilities to close or to set hours. And that applied to the Department of the Interior, the national parks, where you may go there and you'll see, you can only be there at a certain time. You can't camp, you can't do this, you can't do that. And so these kind of regulations are routinely upheld, routinely. So it would be my view at least that, based on what others have done, what the court decisions have done, that if the policy, you know, is adopted, that it is very similar to other rules and laws and examples of regulations that have been routinely upheld by way of closing, setting certain times for operation. closing, setting certain times for operation. It's the same as the Capitol. They have certain hours they're open. You cannot go in there. It's a public building, public area, but they have a right to closing hours.
We will get sued, and we'll have to put public money forward to defend a lawsuit. Even though you say it would be upheld, but just kind of answered my question, that we probably will get sued. And I'm sure your predecessor, when they were addressing the panhandling ordinance, what was it, two city councils ago, they probably said the same thing, and look where we ended up. Was it half a million dollars possibly for settlement of panhandling?
Mayor?
I guess I'll answer the suit question. Any action we take, we always, you know, you're always potential for lawsuits. You can't be hampered or paralyzed by taking action. You know, if individuals are allowed to hang out there, if it's young people, it's older people, something happens, well, they're going to probably look to anybody to sue who owns the property. So that happens all the time. So you can't be paralyzed by taking that action. But with regards to options to, you know, space or where they sleep, I'd let the providers, some are here tonight, speak to that, because there's beds available. Individuals can go there. That's what the shelters are for. That's where we spend our CBG funds through the continuum of care. Of course, there's individuals that probably don't want to adhere to the rules. You know, they want to have their fun and not obey the rules, and so they may not be able to qualify going to the shelters, but the providers can speak to that. So with that, we are trying to come up with other alternatives, and that's a long-term solution. That's what this is all about. What's the long-term solution? So I guess the question is, how many do you think, should we allow any individual? My teenagers want to come down and camp at the library. How many of you really believe youth should be allowed to camp on the library grounds? Anybody really think that? It's just not a safe place. I mean, nobody, you know, you have to have individuals around there, so you're opening yourselves up to potential liability, but the Corporation Council can speak to that. But what we need to do is manage the grounds correctly. You know, going back to Alderman Donlin's point, sure, I guess I could exercise executive authority. If I did, I'm sure the question would be, Mayor, why didn't you bring it before the city council? Because I've heard that before. So it's, you know, you have both sides of the equation that, you know, you're going to cast blame on, so that's the way it is. But really, we need to work together to find the solution. And that's where I'd ask the providers who will, you know, come forward. We are working on a permanent solution. Juan Huerta can come up and speak to the outreach effort, and that was really spirited through the homeless outreach team. Thanks to our police force, they brought an individual from Kansas to speak about individuals that are homeless because of mental illness. And so that's gone on to the next length, where, you know, the media's coverage has helped us. It raised the awareness. Awareness is out there, so individuals want to help. It's a matter of pulling together the resources to really find a holistic approach to address homelessness. And this isn't just an issue for Springfield. This is an issue for communities across the country. So that's what we're working towards, but, you know, the providers can come up and speak tonight if they want, or wait till the council meeting, or Juan Huerta can, as well as the others.
I'll be glad to do that when the discussion's over from the Alderman. We keep the order. I believe that Alderman McMenamin was next.
Mayor, this is one of those situations where you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. There's lots of discussion in the community about this issue. My mail is running probably two-thirds in favor of this ordinance. So I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor for the ordinance, Mr. Mayor. I think what you're doing here, you're trying to get consensus from the city council, so that there's the will of the council behind this action. I think you've identified a growing problem. Our taxpayers see the problem. They pay for the library, and they want it to be a place of learning. They don't want it to become a social service agency. And so I think this is, based on the options that you have before you, this is, you know, one of the many steps that can be taken. And I think you've stated that we're looking for other places where those that are homeless can be safe, and places where, wherever the homeless, and this isn't just about homeless, this is about any congregations after nine o'clock. But others have brought up the issue of homelessness, and so you're working on that solution as well. So we have to work in all areas. And so I think this is a reasonable approach towards a solution, towards a problem that requires more than just this as a solution.
Alderman Redpath.
Alderman Donlin had a pretty good point, that this is a decision by the mayor. But I think moreover on this whole thing is that maybe this shouldn't be an ordinance, maybe a resolution. I do support it. I support the mayor's actions. He's got to start someplace, and this is where it's got to start. We can't worry about a lawsuit, because frankly, we got more than just worrying about people camping at the library. The amount of people that are going to the library to use it for educational services and for the library services is dwindled, because people don't want to go down there, because they can't walk through the gauntlet to get into the building. We've had complaints from our own employees that they can't even get out of the parking garage, because they have to walk through feces and urine every day, and all kinds of other stuff. We have a responsibility to protect everybody in the city. This isn't about homelessness. This is about activities, and it's about characters. We do have a homeless problem, and the mayor is starting someplace. And this is the best place to start, and we need to clean this thing up. It's a black eye on the city of Springfield to leave it the way it is. We need to do something. This is a beginning. We need to support this ordinance, and not because he needs our approval. It's in order to show him that we have the resolution between us, that we're going to support the activities he's taken to try to fix a major problem. He's right. This is not a problem just for Springfield. It's a problem that's going on throughout the state. Everybody I talked to, Decatur, Bloomington, Peoria, Champaign, they got the same problems. But this is a major problem. It's been a problem, and Jim, you know, as far away back into the Davenport administration, we had major problems out there. This has got to be fixed. The citizens of Springfield, and I know Alderman McMenamin says he's got two-thirds mailing coming his way in his favor, I'm getting calls every day saying, fix this problem. It's ridiculous. So that's what we got to do.
Alderman Turner.
Are there other city properties that currently have these restrictions?
Not, no.
Parks at the lake.
I was going to say, maybe some of the parks, the cemetery, I think closes at 10.
Lake parks close at 10.
But, you know, the public grounds downtown, like municipal center, generally, no. So this is, one of the things I would just point out is that this is very limited and very measured, not trying to close the entire, like, municipal complex. So it's very limited in its action. And based on what the other libraries are doing, very similar to policies that other libraries and other communities have adopted.
So I guess, I understand that there is a homeless problem. I think all of us understand that. But I'm just kind of looking at the practicality of this and the domino effect that it may or may not have down the road. So if none of the other municipal-owned properties that are more closely aligned within the city limits proper do not have these restrictions. So if this ordinance passes and the restriction is placed on the library, so what is to stop those individuals from just coming over around Fountain, which is part of Municipal Center West, or going to the Plaza, which is, you know, part of the Municipal Center, or going over to Municipal Center East? I mean, so it seems to me that all you're doing is just moving people a few feet to the north, right, a few feet to the north. So I don't know. I think, I understand we have a problem, but I just don't know if moving people a few feet to the north is one way of solving that problem.
Alderman Hanauer is next.
Thank you. And Alderman Turner, that was kind of my thought, too. I think we need to look at other buildings and either add them to this, or, you know, it should be based on, obviously, Municipal Center East with the police station, there's some conditions that you're not going to be able to do. But I think we ought to look at other buildings, both street, you know, different places that the city has, and add that to this ordinance, because otherwise, we're going to keep coming, doing this again, again, again. The other point that I was going to bring up was, we don't allow, at any of the lake parks, we don't allow overnight camping. Not that I'm aware of. Chuck, we don't allow overnight camping in any of the lake parks, right?
Yeah, legally.
My point, so, I mean, the precedent's been set on this. You know, we're just bringing this in. If we don't allow it in a park, why would we allow overnight camping anywhere here? So, you know, and I agree, I don't think that we have to act. I don't think we, I don't see how we could get sued, yes, but we've gotten sued for things that we didn't think we were going to get sued for. But we have the authority to shut down the buildings and the property, and I think we've already done it with the lake parks. And I think that this is a continuum of that. And so...
Well, just to clarify, excuse me for jumping in, but just to clarify, my comment was not advocating to add Municipal Center East or West to the ordinance. I was simply making a point that this begs for a more permanent, long-term solution, rather than isolating one building. That was my point.
You can respond.
And I agree. I was just, that was my point, that maybe we need to look at adding other things. I'm not looking at this as the homeless problem. I'm looking at this as, we got to be consistent throughout the city on how we deal with our parks, our buildings, our, you know, our property. And, you know, I think the homeless issue's a completely, it's a huge issue that needs to be addressed. And that's going to be a tough one. But I don't look at this as the homeless issue. I don't care if it's a bunch of kids skateboarding out there at night. They don't belong on our property if the buildings are closed. So, you know, I'm just pointing out that the parks we shut down, you know, the cemetery we shut down. So why are we not, you know, we could get sued for those, I guess, if somebody wants to go camp in the park. I don't know. But we need to look at cleaning up our own rules, and then the homeless issue is a completely different issue.
Alderman Senior.
It's hard to discuss this issue without naming or being specific. And I agree with just about everything that's been said in some form or fashion. But specifically, what caused this ordinance to come about, or this resolution to come about, well, the ordinance to come about, and to address that, Mayor, have we put any plans in place to follow up on if the rules aren't being followed? How are we going to enforce it? What's going to be the punishment? And, you know, what types of outreach are we going to do? And is there any types of money that we can go after to put someone in place that could address, or be a spokesperson or an advocate, saying, you know, we have these other services available through our continuum of care, and you might be able to take advantage of that, and working that in association with our hot team officer. And I don't want to address anyone specifically, but everything collectively.
Juan Huerta, and like I said, the providers can speak about their outreach efforts that they've been doing for a number of years. And then also Sergeant Castles isn't here, but he'd be the best one, or maybe Assistant Chief Stokes would want to speak to the hot outreach as far as what they're doing with regards to that. But as far as enforcement, it'd just be like any facility that's closed. If you're not allowed, they ask you to move along, and that's what would take place. And if they, you know, if you have recurring individuals, they could speak about the enforcement aspect, but it'd be a graduated one. But, you know, nobody's going to come down hard and heavy on anyone. It's, you know, it's going to be an approach where you ask them to move along, and hopefully they respect the law. I mean, so that's what you ask for, and it comes down to what Alderman Hanauer said, is the safety aspect. That's what it's all about. So it's going to be a work in progress with regards to that. But again, Juan, or any of the, I don't know if now's the time you want the providers to come up, or anybody to come up and speak about outreach, but...
Still have a list with the Alderman.
Sure.
You're good, Alderman. Alderman Donlin again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alderman Redpath, you're absolutely correct. Unfortunately, history is repeating itself. Back in the late 2000s, this was a hot and heavy issue, as you recall. The mayor at the time made a decision to close the Plaza. And in fact, how it was done is, the argument against closing the Plaza from homeless representatives in the community at the time was that, you know, these individuals don't have a place to put their, don't have a place to put their stuff, their bags, that they carry around and have with them. And so what was done is, everybody was told publicly, meaning the individuals and the groups that represent them, as well as the community as a whole, that weeks from now, that the Plaza would be closed at night. A storage facility was rented, in which lockers were placed, and each evening, individuals were afforded the opportunity to store their items there, and then they could come back and get them the next morning. And everybody was given weeks, weeks' notice that the Plaza was going to be closed. Ultimately, I looked it up, November 1st of 2007, the Plaza was indeed closed by mayoral action. And it seemed to be going smoothly. My question is, and I don't really know who to ask it, so I'm just going to kind of throw it out there, is, the Plaza was closed. I recall there even being signs placed outside the library that said the Plaza was closed, and gave the hours. When did that change? Does anybody know in this room? I know Mr. Griffin was on the council at the time.
Was it posted, Jim?
Yeah, I believe it was. Now, my memory at times isn't always completely accurate, but it was definitely, the Plaza was definitely closed in the evening, and it was set hours. I recall there being a, I recall there being a sign. But neither here nor there, it was definitely closed. It's, you know, documented in the newspaper. I'm sure you remember it as well. So first of all, I guess, you know, if it was never changed, is that, I guess the question is, is that still in effect? And that's kind of the heart of why we need the ordinance. Mayor, I understand what you're saying. I mean, we have a problem over there. It doesn't look good. Children, people that utilize the library, it is intimidating at times, and we don't need that here. But Alderman Proctor, you're correct, too, that the overall, and it was a problem back then, unfortunately, it's still a problem today. We were headed down the path of having a day center, and working with organizations, one organization in particular to get that done, and help alleviate and give more resources to the individuals that are in need. And Mayor, I'm glad to hear that your staff, and I don't doubt it for a millisecond, that your staff's been working long and hard on trying to help these individuals. Because I know you've known me a long time. As a matter of fact, I believe you were my leadership Springfield coordinator when I went through that program way back when, but 20 years ago plus. But, so I know what's in your heart. You're there to help those, help the individuals that need it, and I want to help anyway we can. And I'm sure everyone else in the council wants to help any way we can. But that's the reason why I brought that issue up. Wasn't a slam at you, wasn't, it's just, you know, that decision was made years ago. When was it turned around? Why isn't it being enforced? What changed was really the point. So thank you very much.
Alderman DiCenzo.
First of all, to say this ordinance is not directed at homeless people is false. It is directed at homeless people. And to suggest ticketing homeless people is ludicrous. We're criminalizing poverty, and I personally find that repulsive. So to Alderman Proctor's point, you know, I will completely support this ordinance after there's a plan in place to find a path forward, because this doesn't make sense. We're talking about people. We're talking about people's lives. We're talking about, you know, making this city better. And the only way to make this city better is to make everybody's life better. So that's where I stand on this. I'm a definite no. And I understand the problem. I understand everything everyone around this horseshoe has said. But we have to look to the future, and we have to look to a way to try to solve a problem. But we have to look to the future, and we have to look to a way to try to solve a problem and not put a Band-Aid on something. And this is a Band-Aid.
Alderman McMenamin.
There's lots of good points being made here tonight, back and forth. Just as far as why the attraction to the library, I think the library has certain features that, um, cause people to come to it. It's, you know, it's designed as an upside-down pyramid, so to speak, where the second floor overhangs the first floor, the third floor overhangs the, all, uh, lower floors, so there's shelter there, uh, if you're outside. Shelter from the rain, shelter from snow. Also, the library is designed with a series of benches around it, around the entire perimeter. There's probably, theoretically, there's enough space for, um, 50 bodies to sleep on those benches at night, theoretically. Uh, there's also exhaust, uh, fans, uh, pushing hot, warm air out at certain times. So, there's an attraction there. We also have to take into consideration, this building is unique among the city-owned buildings in the sense that it probably has more, um, of our traffic, of our, uh, public participation, people coming and going, in and out of the library, more than any other building. So, our public uses that library, and we don't have branch libraries anymore. We don't have branch libraries. So that's the single library that children, uh, mothers, the elderly, everyone, uh, gets to use. And, um, we're hearing a lot of, uh, stories that it's become a, on the outside, a social congregation area that, um, is difficult for many of our residents, um, to maneuver through. So, I, I support the ordinance, um, now, and, um, I, I hope we, um, take action as a council to, um, support the mayor's efforts on this.
Alderman Fergensy.
Yes, thank you. Everybody's brought up a lot of good points, but nobody's really gotten to the end result of the matter is, how many homeless people do we have, and where can we have them sleep? And will they go in there to sleep? I know we had a problem at the county with people staying there, in the county building. A lot of the people that were there didn't want to go to shelters, they wanted to stay outside. So, I, I think we, uh, we need to address the issue, but we need to find out how, how many people there are that are homeless, and if we have the beds and the facilities to house them. That's the ultimate end.
Alderman Redpath. Chuck?
I'm good.
Uh, Alderman Proctor, you wanted to speak again?
Yeah, really quick, just to kind of hit on Alderman Fergensy's point, and then I'd ask Erica Smith from Helping Hands to come up, because.
Maybe.
I got you.
When we're ready.
Yes, of course. But to hit your point, what I understand with this, it's called clientele or individuals, is they're the ones that, they don't, they don't adhere to the rules, like the mayor said, to the particular shelters that are existing. And so they're not entering the system to seek help. They're not interacting with case managers, they're not interacting with social service groups to, to move along and to receive medical care, sign up for social security, sign up for Medicaid, you know, get housing and stuff. It's just, that's the nature of these individuals, is just, they're not, I don't want to say not being welcomed there, but they're just, they're just not getting there. And so what we need, and Erica's going to hit on this, is a 24-hour, low-barrier entry shelter, which can address these. And these shelters are starting to pop up in major communities throughout the United States, because they address, and they recognize we have a mental health issue in the United States, and it's getting worse. And the federal government is not taking action on that, the state is a little bit, but it's up to the cities to lead the charge to address this issue, because they're being abandoned. And to answer your question, that's, I think that's the, the nature of these individuals. And so, uh, when it is public comment time, and thank you for keeping us on task, Chairman Thailand, on that point, I would hope that Erica would address that matter.
All right. I have a couple of comments, and I'm going to explain the rules that we're going to follow for public comment on this. First off, Mr. Zirkel, how many other cities did you find had similar ordinances to this in your research?
Um, we looked at, I believe, about six.
Six other cities of comparable size?
Of libraries.
Or other libraries?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And have those libraries, do you know whether or not those ordinances in those particular municipalities face legal challenges, or were they just, how long have they been on the books?
Most had been there for some time, and in fact, interestingly, uh, several, uh, actually, uh, I felt were probably subject to challenge because of the language. Uh, they had rules that restricted hours and so on, but, uh, as an example, uh, they also referred specifically loitering, uh, which, um, is, uh, in my view at least, very problematic. Uh, and there have been cases that have invalidated references or those kind of, uh, references and rules and regulations. So, uh, multiple ones had restrictions on hours and/or restrictions on certain activities. And so, uh, we were trying to be appropriately careful, plus court decisions, in terms of fashioning something that was uniform, and I feel would be, if a question came up, was very limited in nature, very directed, the, uh, directed to the very specific issue, tailored to address that issue, and, uh, written so it applies uniformly. And I do think that it meets the, uh, legal, uh, requirements of such a regulation.
Okay. And then to bring up an item that the mayor mentioned earlier about the, uh, possible insurance liability issues, we face issues of liability if we had someone who was skateboarding over there and fell. We have issues where if someone was going through there, if we had a group of, of drunks that went right on 7th instead of left, and they turned around and had an accident over on the library property. We have insurance liability issues of people being on those grounds during that time period when we don't have library security, library staff. I don't necessarily know exactly what we have in the way of CCTV cameras over there, um, on the outside of the building, but we are incurring a legal liability by having people on the property after closing time. Is that correct?
Well, uh, in answer to that question, without, without doubt, because the city owns, you know, mu- tremendous amounts of public property, uh, there are uniformly claims, and uh, that can lead to additional claims, or certainly could be arguments for that.
And, um, to the other point that the mayor made earlier, we're not, even though, yes, it does affect the homeless in effect, it also affects skateboarders, people who are wandering around at night, drunks, you know, we don't, you know, we wouldn't want to have a Boy Scout troop down there camping for a merit badge, or any of the other things, because of the different insurance liabilities. And I think for me, that's the direction that I see this, is, I agree with what you're saying, we need to find a way forward, but we can't take on the responsibility of the liability that we're having there at the moment. I, I think that it's, we need to have a point where we're moving forward. Yes, I'm hoping that some answers come from the community on this, because this is a social service issue, and the municipality is not exactly a social agency. We have some things that we provide, but it is not designed, we're not taking the taxpayer money and doing a lot of that with it. We're doing roads, we're doing sidewalks, we're doing other things with the money that we, we have to deal with. And as everyone knows, we're having budget crisis issues and have for years. This goes back into the Houston administration, when we started, when we started losing tax dollars. So, we have to be very prudent with our spending of the, of the tax dollars and how we handle it. I know that we've had several different conversations with people from downtown Springfield, Salvation Army, other things that we've talked about. So, I am going to open the floor, I want everyone to understand the rules that I'd like to adhere to. Um, we're going to limit each speaker from the public to five minutes. I ask that you not repeat things that other people have already said. So if one person comes up to talk about item A, I don't want five people coming up and talking about item A. It would be best if we, if we hit the points that we need to hit as we move along. Um, because we actually did have three people who signed up, I'm going to ask those three people if they want to go first, or if they want to let the social service agencies and Director Huerta respond to some of the discussion before they talk. So, if William Huck, Frank Tyrock.
Tyree.
Tyree. Sorry, I can't read, uh, Clerk Lesko's handwriting, I'll blame him. Um, and Bob Schaeff, the three of you did sign up. If you'd like to speak first, I'm giving you that right. If you'd like to wait until after the social service agency speak, you'll go first then. Does that agree to all three? If you would like to go, if you're signed up in one of the three names that I named, that would be fine with me, and then we'll let the social service agencies go, and we'll hold you two.
Thank you. Eric, come in.
Mr. Clerk, thank you.
Thank you.
My first meeting in many years, but, uh, thank you for being here and while you do for the city. I think most of, all of us are concerned about the homeless.
Uh, sir, I need you to identify yourself first.
All right. My name is Robert Schaff. I've been a citizen of Springfield for 50 years. I live on the West Side, off of Washington Avenue, near St. John's Lutheran Church, to locate me, if that's.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just say that I know that is, uh, but I agree that the, with the mayor, that the library should not be the homeless hotel for the future. I think for a temporary basis, because of tourism being so important to Springfield at this time, is there a possibility that a couple of porta-potties could be set out there? I know in European cities and elsewhere, I've seen that. I see that in several of the parks. They cost $85 a week, and it's a $25 delivery, so for a very small amount of money, which I think the, if the city wouldn't pay for it, I think the downtown Springfield, and I'd be glad to contribute the first couple of weeks myself, just to help it out. But that would relieve some of the concern about the tourism and the, as Mr. Redpath mentioned, the problem there. But that's a very temporary, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, most. Then there are some other alternatives that, uh, having been involved in housing eight years on a Springfield Housing Authority chairman and so forth, and developer in the city, uh, I'd like to be on the committee, if it's possible, to work on this. I've got some ideas that, uh, I don't know if they're practical, though, I think, but I understand the budget problems. I think there are a couple of things that would cost very little to maintain, to develop and maintain, that might take care of some of the problems of the people who don't want to go inside for the night, who do want to live on the street. That's the end of my statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Huerta, if you'd like to come next. And I believe I, there was mentioned, we have Helping Hands, Salvation Army, DSI, are there any other groups that are, um, providers who are here that, besides those? Go ahead, Juan.
Yeah, I do want to make a couple of points. First of all, I want to commend some of the service agencies that are here, they do an excellent job, working with the community. Uh, you know, each of you should be proud. Now, for six months, from November to April, we opened a shelter for the homeless. Each of you approved of the funding. We spent $35,000 from November to April. And if you remember, April was really cold, so we reopened the shelter. So when people say that the mayor's not doing enough, and you guys don't do enough, that's false. You know, the homeless is an issue for everybody here, not just the mayor, or myself, or Erica, or Renata, it's everybody's issue, you know? You know, we service over 45 people a night, from November all the way to April. And it was, uh, you know, we, we did a good deed, the city did a good deed. You know, we provided a hot meal, and people had a place to stay. You know, one of the things that we need going forward is, is finding a solution, and finding a solution with services, you know? You know, open the warming center right now, and letting people go over there on intoxicator or, or high or something, doesn't resolve the issue. You know, some people think that that's the issue, just to open the warming center, let people in, and, you know, they're away from downtown and from your neighborhood. We need to find a solution with services, case management, uh, you know, mental health, medical. Those are the issues that we need to resolve this issue. You know, I, I get sick and tired when people say, you know, every city's having the same issue. So what? Let's be different, and let's resolve the issue. You know, Mr. Fergensy had a good point, some of the homeless doesn't want to go to a shelter. That's, that's the bottom line. I have a lot of homeless that, I talk to them, they don't want to go to a shelter, they don't want to. You know, you know, Erica has, uh, open beds in her shop, uh, Contact Minister has open beds. They don't want to go over there, because there's rules and procedures, you know? So, you know, yeah, we need to find a solution. You know, we had, the mayor and myself, with Erica and some of the board members from Helping Hands, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, to, to see where we're going to go with that, and even improve the warming center. Because it just open a building, and people coming high and drunk every day, is not a solution. And to some people, that's the solution. Because I don't want to move, I don't want to move, you know, the issue from here to here, and it's, and it's the same result. If you don't change what you do every day, you won't get, you won't get a different result. So, uh, I will, as long as I'm in this job, I will continue to work hard, to, to make things, to improve the quality of life of everybody, not just, not just the homeless. But, you know, we're going to need some funding, and, uh, you know, the building that we got right now, is going to be there for three to four, maybe five years. Eventually, it's going to go down, because it's through the railroad project, so, and that building is not even equipped to be a shelter. Because, you know, you, you need to have the experts to determine, you know, what kind of space you need, offices for, uh, health, for, uh, mental health, for, uh, case management to help people, you know? So that building is there just for a little bit. So we need to, in the future, we need to somehow find a building with, with, with a good structure, so we can move this forward. So, but the bottom line is that, you know, when people say that we haven't done enough, you know, six months out of the year, we open the shelter for, for, for our citizens. Yeah, can we do more? Yes, we can do more. But I just wanted to make sure that you guys should be commended for, you know, approving the funding, and the mayor taking the initiative for buying the building to help the homeless. Otherwise, you know, because in years before, the way it worked was, they were, uh, Salvation Army's two years, and a Helping Hands two years. And the last year that they had a Helping Hands, it was in the back of Helping Hands. Everybody was packed in a very small room. So, have we improved? Yes, we have improved. Can do we better? Yes, we can do better. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware that, you know, that we have made some improvements, so.
Thank you, Juan. Erica?
Thank you.
If you're representing us as a service provider agency, please give your name and the agency.
My name is Erica Smith, and I'm the executive director of Helping Hands. Uh, we run a 20, or 20, not, 365-day-a-year men's shelter, and we also have been the operator of the winter warming center. So that's our, our role in this, in this debate. Um, we do support this ordinance, because the public library cannot be expected to operate as a makeshift shelter for people who are chronically homeless, and, and we understand that. However, um, I want to be clear that we also do have some concern that passing this ordinance will create an out-of-sight, out-of-mind attitude that ultimately won't do anything to address the issue in a meaningful way. And I think that's very important. So, I want to, uh, you know, today, talk about what might be some meaningful ways, and also to say that our support is contingent upon the expectation that the city will be an active leader to create sustainable, long-term approaches to addressing homelessness. And we're certainly willing to be a part and a partner of that effort, endeavor. But before I speak about, just for a minute, uh, what those sustainable, long-term approaches are, because I think this is the time to at least start having that discussion, I feel compelled to remind everyone that we're not talking about the homeless or the chronically homeless, and there is a difference between those two. We're talking about people. And we're talking about people who are experiencing homelessness, uh, people who have endured a significant amount of trauma in their lives, and for many of whom just getting through the day requires a lot of strength and grace. They're trying to survive the best they can, and they do deserve our compassion, and, most importantly, our respect. Uh, with that said, uh, we do have to accept, yes, that there are people who are currently unwilling to be sheltered or accept services, and we can't force people to be sheltered or to quit their addiction, to access mental health services, or to do what we feel is best for them. But that's not to say we should give up on them. On the contrary, we should employ competent outreach with these folks to build trust and safety. We know that establishing trust and relationships must be a foundation of our strategy to eliminate homelessness as much as possible. And that's why Helping Hands supports the homeless outreach team the way that we do. team the way that we do, and we think this is a vital piece of what needs to happen. You should also know that last week, a task group that was formed by the Heartland Continuum met to talk about how to help people who are unsheltered and homeless, and I have a copy of this, and I'll pass it out after I'm done, but we did quite a bit of research in our office, Renata Hamilton and one of our shelter managers, to look at what other cities do that's effective and that works. And at this task force meeting, we talked about the, it's a crisis response system, and it's a very effective model that other communities have employed, with both short-term and long-term approaches. We also believe, I do disagree strongly, that this is a social services issue, we certainly should be the one providing the services and being a part of this, and a strong leader, but we also desperately need strong city leadership to make this happen. We cannot simply social service ourselves out of homelessness. So, for us, whether or not this ordinance is passed, we believe if the city is serious about helping people who are homeless, that we need to take the following steps. The first thing is, if it has not been done already, we need to appoint a Springfield Police Department Officer as the dedicated homeless outreach team officer. That has to happen if it has not already. The hot team then can work with the outreach group that came out of the task force from the continuum, to help people who are ready to be housed, and build relationships with people who aren't yet. We would ask, as Juan alluded to, that the city work with Helping Hands, our board voted that we would accept the current Winter Warming Center population as ours, and that we would be willing to be a part of a long-term solution to help them, so there's not batting around, or, you know, who's going to take it this year? They're ours, they're our population, and we care about them, and we want them to be our clientele. And so we would ask the city to help us transform what the current Winter Warming Center is, into a low-barrier emergency shelter, that's a service entry point, that can operate year round, to triage people who are in need of shelter, support services, and, most importantly, homeless prevention. We would ask the city to take responsibility, and we've talked to the mayor and Juan about this, in developing what that looks like, and how it can be sustainable for our community, particularly the most vulnerable among us. We also can't have this conversation without talking about affordable, permanent housing options that eliminate existing barriers to participation, particularly for people who have a criminal record, or who are a sex offender. We know that this is a barrier, and without this piece, we cannot have a continuum from homeless to housed. I can see that my time is getting low, and I certainly want to respect that, and the final thing I would say, is that we do need to explore the possibility of a detox center for people who cannot get sober without the support of medical detox. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here and to share these ideas, I do have more information I'd like to distribute, and Juan, zero.
And I believe to respond to you, I believe that Officer Jerry Castles has been assigned as the hot team officer. Ma'am, if you'd like to give the items to Tim Griffin?
Thank you.
All right, I believe that we have other service providers, we have Salvation Army here, would you like to go next, or would you like to wait?
I'm not prepared.
You're not prepared? And then, is there anyone else here who is representing a service provider? Okay, at this time, I'm going to let the two gentlemen who signed up speak, in whichever order, whichever you guys wants to come up first, and then we'll go to DSI after they speak.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is William Huck, I'm a Springfield resident for 31 years, and for the last year and a half, I've spent really most of my days talking to and subsequently interviewing women to begin with, that have been homeless, or currently homeless, and it's given me an incredible amount of insight into their lives, and I just want to share a few thoughts that relate to this. There are many good and valid reasons for why homeless people should not be at the library, which might irritate them if they heard me say that, but there's more to what I want to share. I would be supportive of prohibiting them from staying there, but only if there was an alternative provided ahead of time. In other words, do not prohibit their being there, without first offering an alternative. So, the real question, in my opinion, that needs to be addressed, is why are they there in the first place? Yes, the confirmation of the building has been mentioned, that is one of them, it does provide shelter, but there's a more salient reason why they're there, is safety, okay? Homeless women are incredibly at risk of being sexually assaulted, and at the library, they have safety in numbers, because there's a good number of them, and I have been there in the evenings, I've had to help somebody at 12:30 in the morning, and also when they're closing up shop and getting ready to move out at 5:30, 6 o'clock. They are incredibly at risk, and that is one place where they find some kind of safety. They're also in close proximity to the police station, which, you know, at first glance, you wonder, why would a homeless person want to be anywhere near a police station, right? But, it's because of safety, that's why they're there. There is quite a bit of space in the shelter facilities, but on occasion, there isn't, especially for women, there are limitations on how long they can stay, and when they run out of time, and if they still don't have a place at that time, the library is one of the places they end up. And I'm going to be really honest here, Helping Hands requires a breathalyzer test, and that is a very significant problem, for the majority of people that I know use the library to stay at night. Now, we can judge them for being alcoholics, and the majority of them, I think it would be fair to label them as such, but to use the expression, "they're there so they can have their fun," is incredibly callous and flippant, because in all honesty, if you folks had any conception of what these individuals have had to go through and survive, I mean, to me, it is an absolute miracle that some of them are still functioning, reasonably so, after what they've gone through, especially the women. It's just an incredible achievement, if you know their stories, and I hope to share those in the future. Given that kind of a situation, if you had an understanding of what they've gone through, I think that you would be disinclined to be judgmental. So, I don't need my entire time, what I want to do is give voice to a homeless individual, and tell you what she said when I asked her, "If you could address the people of Springfield, talk to them directly, what would you tell them?" Here's her answer. "I'd say that when I came here four years ago, I thought it would be bad, I thought people would hassle me, be judgmental, tell me to move on, move on, move on, that's what I expected, but it hasn't been like that. People have been nice to me, if I could get a job, I'd be in a better situation, until then, I'll just have to get by, but people have been good to me, not all of them, but quite a few, and I would say thank you." And that is from a person who doesn't like to use shelters, has nothing but what she can carry on her back, and she wants to thank you folks for not telling her to move on, move on, move on. So please, come up with an alternative, before you do something about the library, please.
Thank you. Mr. Tyree.
Hello, my name is Frank Tyree, I'm a retired Chief Bosensmait, Surface Warfare, United States Navy. I've been retired for 20 years, I'm a life member of the VFW, and I'm also the post-service officer for Post 10-302, the North Enders, okay? Among the things that I've learned to do as a service officer is to help veterans, I started out just helping veterans, but I have expanded that, now it's no longer just helping veterans, but whoever else needs help, and I have expanded my ability to help them by reaching out, shaking hands with different people, giving them my card, letting them know that I am available, and finding out what they can do for anybody that I run across. So I have really built up quite a list of people, including Renata, hi Renata, and Erica, hi Erica, who also graciously invited me to this meeting of different organizations that wanted to discuss and see if they can come up with some viable solutions to the homeless problem. Now, we all agreed on one thing, right off the bat, and that was, the homeless problem will not go away. That is the human condition, it will not go away. And, so, when I heard Friday, I think it was, on the television, the words, "Evict the homeless from the library," I was just shocked, I was appalled, because there's, I mean, here we are, I am, I am part of that outreach that they were talking about, I'm one of the ones that's going to be boots on the ground, down there, sitting in the dirt, talking to them. If I could reach one, and bring him in, it would be a miracle, because you see, a lot of these people that are out there are veterans, I don't know how many, but I know they're out there. These veterans, a lot of them have PTSD, and I know it when I see it, because I got it. Now I'm going to tell you, the difference between them and me, is just a matter of circumstance. I could be out there on the street, and I can still remember another tale of another city called San Diego, two particularly distinct tales. The first one was back during the 70s, and I was going to Vietnam and coming back from Vietnam, and there I was in San Diego, and the signs I remember distinctly downtown on their square were, "Dogs and sailors, keep off the grass." Heck of a thing to say to those who defend your country, and, so, here I was, helping, and I heard about this, but that wasn't the worst of it, the worst of it was, then I found out last night, when I went out to give away socks, because that's one of the basic essentials that homeless people need, are socks. In the military, you're taught, keep your weapon clean and dry, and keep your feet clean and dry, without them, you're useless, okay? And I remembered that, and it suddenly occurred to me, I needed to take care of people in that respect, and I started out about six months ago, was it six months ago that we had that stand down? Okay, it was a veteran stand down, and I brought a bag of socks, I emptied my sock drawer, clean, good socks, they're not new, but they are to him, okay? This person needed the socks, they use them socks, they put them on their feet, and they wear them until they're no longer serviceable, and then they clean their feet and they put on a new pair, and that's to keep them going. Okay, the second tale of San Diego was back in 1995, when I noted a sudden increase in the homeless population down there. Well, their mayor also noticed this, noticed it, their mayor, and what happened was, they did a little interviewing, and they found that certain cities back east were approaching the homeless, buying them a ticket, giving them a hundred dollar bill, and saying, "There's a warmer place down there in San Diego, why don't you go down there and hang out?" And, this was happening, it wasn't a joke to them, because suddenly, all these homeless people were showing up, okay? That's kicking the dog down the street, and, so, when I found out that, over the weekend, our city kicked the dog down the street, kicked them out of the library, we haven't even passed the ordinance yet, but they kicked them out of the library already, okay? The problem doesn't exist, they say. Well, it does, and I hope you help us find a solution, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Clerk. Yeah, all right, ma'am.
Just to talk about veterans, our community's been very supportive of veterans, we've got the shelter on South Spring Street, which came into being seven years ago, with lots of community support, it's just an incredible facility, it's clean, it's well-run, and it was due to the generosity of our local citizens in major part, and then, second, and they do have empty beds there, on a routine basis, although it's a tenant for a six-month shelter, but more recently, mayor, you know, this council, just three months ago, due to the mayor's initiative, we voted a half a million dollars for 20 more units, to focus on women, veterans, and children, and the meditating campus, so, this council is doing, taking action, in a forward-looking way to handle the problem, so we, John, the veterans, we got to really point that out to the public who might not be aware of that.
That's through Fifth Street Renaissance. But we appreciate you coming up and your insights, that's helpful. Lisa, do you want to speak on behalf of DSI?
I don't have anything formal, Lisa Clemensdot, Executive Director of Downtown Springfield Inc., I don't have anything formal to convey from my board, it's just two years of experience on the ground with the business owners, I did have a conversation with the mayor and Alderman Thailand, sponsors of this, I think, hopefully, from you hearing from Erica and other people tonight, it just, this being a standalone ordinance feels wrong, I have a lot of compassion for Will coming into the library director position, and all of the wonderful ways he has interacted with the homeless community, but a question that I don't think any of you dare to consider or have asked, is, well, some of you have, where will these people go? And I feel like that maybe something's already started to move them out of the library area, and I have seen more people in doorways, I have seen more people in underhangs all around the downtown, and, you know, I hear from you that it's too much of a liability risk for the city, it's too much this for the city, it's too much that, so you're just pushing it off to the private businesses in the downtown area, and to the social service agencies that are underfunded. I would love for there to be some type of a council task force, like CWLP, that focuses on this, because I think this is a standalone ordinance, doesn't address anything. You're saying that it's not a homeless ordinance, but there are no patrons to the library after 9:00 PM, so, that's my informal take on downtown.
Thank you. There's been a few things that have been said, and I'd like to give Director Will O'Hearn a chance to reiterate some of those things that he said in previous interviews, about the library, and about how the homeless are some of the best patrons he has, and just different things about the daytime treatment, we're, this is not saying that the homeless cannot be at the library, period, this is, you know, Will's been very supportive of the daytime activities, and has even made some public comments.
Yeah, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Will O'Hearn, Director of the Library, thanks for bringing me up. So yeah, we're doing a number of different things to help, help with this at the library here, we're working with mental health individuals from SIU Med, we're also working with Memorial to have them come down once a week, we're also, SIU Med once a week, so that's with addiction for, that, we're actually installing a, talking about installing a phone that directs, connects directly to 211, so there can be more social services, sometimes people don't even, 211 is basically goes the United Way, and they can get connected with more services, things like that. We had Helping Hands come down, and thank you Erica for that, we appreciate that, and we are, actually are also looking at perhaps doing something like an application hour, where we can actually assist people, because sometimes, there are low computer skills with them, so we are trying to assist, kind of with that, so, it is a thing that we deal with all the time, we're happy to have a lot of the patrons there, like I said, some of my best patrons, day in and day out, come and read my magazines more than anyone else, and we're happy to have them, but...
And for the most part, you don't really have a lot of behavior issues during the day, anything of that nature, it's few and far between?
It's few and farther in between, we do have more stuff more at night, and while we do have stuff during the day, there is security that will address that while at night, there is no, no one to really address those issues, so...
Once the library closes, we do not have a security...
No, we don't, so it's basically unsecured, there's no one watching any of the cameras, anything at that point, when during the day, there is a security guard there from 7:00 to 8:30, so that's kind of why we looked at those times as possible times.
Very good.
I'm happy to answer any questions, or make any other additional comments if anyone would like me to. would like me to.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you so much.
Frank, are we having an issue with the clock posting?
Yes.
Okay.
But I have an additional.
All right, any additional people who wish to speak, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Clerk Lesko will keep time of how long you have to speak. Heather Proctor, if you'd like to come up.
Heather Proctor, live at 1011 North Sixth Street. Obviously, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I do have a couple of things I would like to say and get off my chest. I know for me personally now, for about two years, I've been, we'll say, helping advocate, we'll say that, through social service agencies, and for people that are homeless and the low income. And I cannot tell you the numerous times that we've had conversations and meetings, and things I was involved with directly and heard outside of other meetings that took place. And while I think it is gravely unfortunate that it's something like this that is coming forward with an actual law per se, where we think that this is going to be the answer, I can honestly, honestly say, if this, bringing this to the light, if this is what it takes for us to move forward, and to have advancements, and to have the media involvement, and to not just have lip service, but for you to actually get behind, not necessarily, you know, a long-term plan, yes, we need long-term, we need A to Z, but at the same time, we need A to B. We need very simple things, even if, community campaigns, you know, making the public aware of what's really going on, the real issues. You know, I know that not all the aldermen have this, these issues, and they don't really understand what's going on on a day-to-day, very cellular basis, but these guys do, they have the training, they have the know-how, they, they get it. And, you know, for years now, we've been talking about unity over and over and over again, and to be able to see that on every level, you know, where we can have the social service agencies working together, they have to be able to work with the city. We need, we need leadership, we need someone to say, "This is what we're doing, this is how it's going to happen." And not just to be able to hear it over and over again, but there, for there to be action. So if this is what it takes, I am for the discussion, but this is not the answer. This is not the way it should happen, and this is not the way it should be. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone.
Yep.
I'd say I couldn't see through Ralph's head, but, you know.
Good evening, thank you for all the discussion. My name is Sheila Beebe. I am a resident of Springfield and have raised my children here. I have a child who is addicted, and living as an addicted person on the street is a very difficult life. Being the mother of an addicted child doesn't even come near to what he goes through, as he tries to find a place to sleep, find a place to go to the bathroom, find a place to eat. He's mentally ill, he has autism. In 2004, he was in a car accident with my husband. The accident wasn't his fault, but my husband died, and my son lived. But the life he's living right now is terrible. And to criminalize him, and fine him because he wants a place to sleep, is, that's just not the way to do it. I am a hospital chaplain, I'm sorry, because this makes me emotional. When I am a hospital chaplain, I go, and I'm with people at the time of their death. I sit with them, and I hold their hands, and I'm there with people who have lived homeless, whose kidneys are shutting down, there's no kidneys to replace them, they are dying, they have no one there because they have been judged by everyone. And I go and I hold their hand, and I believe they're my son, because when it's my son's turn, I want someone to do the same for him. And if all of you and everyone would stop judging and start understanding that it could be any one of us, three mortgage payments, and we're out there on the street. And so, I wish so deeply that you would come at this from a place of compassion, and try your very, very best to come up with solutions, before you make them feel even more like criminals. They have no money, they have no life, it's hard, their feet are rotten, their, their heads are crazy. And there are people that, they are the people who we are, that we take care of, the least of our brethren. That's what we need to do, and that's what we need to think. And if each of you, when you look at one of them, would think, God forbid, this would be my son, then maybe you would have more compassion in how you deal with this. And you can't just kick them out, you can't just push them away, because it doesn't work. We have to have services, we have to have 24/7 places for them to go, and if they can't sleep under a roof because they have PTSD, then let's find a way for them to sleep somewhere else. And so, I believe in my heart of hearts that you have to find a solution. All the energy needs to be put into what the solution will be, and not with just turning them into worse citizens, making them feel that they have no place. I thank you.
If I could, Chairman.
All right, one second, Mayor. Any alderman who wish to make a final comment? Mayor?
Actually, I'd like to call Renetta Hamilton to come up. And while she comes up, I'll just address a couple of items. One is, I think Erica Smith hit the nail on the head, we're talking about people, not only individuals that are in the situation they are with regards to homelessness, but also the providers, everybody in this room and outside this room that has compassion. With regards to lip service, we haven't provided lip service, you can ask Juan where to, that's why we have the overflow shelter that we purchased, the city council purchased. Alderman McMiniman brought up about the veterans. When we see issues, we try to address the issue. And so, when I get a call, when I'm 6,000 miles away, with aldermen that are concerned, citizens that are concerned about the safety of any individual with regards to what's happening at the library, that's an issue that we need to address. So we can't ignore those issues, and that's why this ordinance is coming forward. So, you know, what's got us to this point, let's face it, everybody in this room should contact the state legislatures, because there's been cuts to mental health services, there's been cuts to social service industry, and when that happened, guess who was called upon? The city of Springfield. And before, we were doing the homeless shelter, or the overflow shelter, where we'd accept everybody, we didn't turn anybody away. It was three months, but we did six months. And that wasn't easy, Helping Hand stepped up to the plate, the continuum of care stepped up to the plate, individual contributions, St. John's provided services, meals, and the list goes on and on. But really, what it came down to is people providing that service. And one was Renetta Hamilton, Archie had also helped, and Erica bringing meals, I mean, they've given up hours and hours and hours. So if I could open that shelter tomorrow, I would. But what it comes down to is having individuals to make sure it's a safe environment. And how do we get to that point? That they're qualified and can provide the oversight that's needed? Because it is a very difficult situation. So to say that we've ignored it, that's not the case. We take all our citizens, wherever they come from, their safety comes first and foremost for everybody on this council and outside, you know, that's how we approach things. But I'd like Renetta to share her insights with regards to the overflow shelter, and how she sees this going forward, because we are going to find a permanent solution. It's always been our goal to do that, but it comes down to resources, and the most important part, people that can carry that mission out.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Renetta Hamilton. This is very emotional for me, and I told myself I wasn't going to cry, and I wasn't going to get upset, but these are somebody's children. I work with all the parents, me and Archie are the one that the coroners call when they find a dead body. We give up countless hours. We sit at the hospital with people's kids that we don't know, making sure that they're treated properly, that they're given the proper medical attention. We give up so much of our own time and our own families for people that we don't even know. And I know this is a very hard decision, because you guys don't see it. All you do is hear what people come up and say, day in and day out. You hear the complaints, and you hear the glories, but you don't know their stories. You're not there with them. All you see is somebody that's doing something wrong. You don't know what they've been through. You don't know what we go through at social service agencies to see these people, and what they go through. You don't know what we go through when families are calling us, when mothers reach out to us and say, "Can you help me with my child?" It's very, it's a very hard situation to be in. I totally understand that the library, it is a business, and people deserve to go there and not have to deal with people drinking, and the mental health issues and all of that. But this cannot be an agency issue, it has to be a community issue. These are our neighbors, these are people that we have to deal with day in and day out, no matter what. And if we don't help them and turn them into productive citizens, what have we done? We have done nothing. We can all sit here and say that this should happen this way, or that should happen this way, or what we need, but we can't have a mat and meal service and say that this is going to help people. The Winter Warming Center cannot continue to run as a mat and a meal. We take you in as you are, we give you a mat, we give you a meal, and we turn you away before anything opens in the morning. So they're still out in the cold, no matter what, we're still turning them back into the same elements that we're supposed to be protecting them from, before anything else is open. So to move forward, we have to come up with something that's sustainable, something that can help them. We have to come up with mental health, and we have to come up with meal providers that will be there every day. We have to come up with jobs. How can we, how can we encourage them and build them back up to be what they need to be to survive? Even if we say affordable housing, how can we put somebody in a house but not teach them how to sustain that house? Some people have been homeless for so long that now it's a lifestyle for them, because guess what? They've given up on their self. They don't know how to do anything different. Because they feel like everybody who has ever supposed to have been there for them has betrayed them or given up on them. So now they give up on their self. So they come to me, and they come to Archie, and they come to Erica, and they're looking at us for answers that we don't have. I always tell myself, like, I can never be rich, because I will still be poor, because all my money will go to helping everybody else. So the only thing I can do is give time, and the only thing I can do is ask for help. I can't do this by myself, Erica can't do this by herself, and neither can anybody else here. It takes a community to raise up. We can only be as good as we all are as citizens. This city is not going to be any better, the problem is not going to go away, unless we come together and say, "How can we fix this?" And fixing is not moving them along. I totally agree that they shouldn't be there, but at least give us a chance to go out there with them and say, "Okay, this is going to happen in three weeks. We need to start working now." We've already started doing outreach, case management, so I'm going out into the different areas, I'm going to the library, I'm going to the mission, and I'm still meeting with the Winter Warming Center clients to say, "Okay, what can we do? How can we do this?" Moving forward, we have to have SOAR, we have to be able to help with social security applications, we have to help them keep their social security. Everybody comes up and say, "Well, they have income." They do have income. But when somebody turns them in because a family member is no longer getting their money, and social security takes away their living wage, you know what their income is? $250. And then, in order to get their living wage back, the other $410, they have to provide a lease, ID that matches that lease, mail that's coming to that address, and that takes two or three months to get that living wage back. So what happens in those two or three months that they're not paying rent? They're right back evicted. Social service agencies don't have the money to pay rent, so here we are, we're right back at the same situation. So we have to be able to help them, assist them, teach them, guide them, and then turn them back into the community so they could be just like us. I don't make a whole lot of money, but I can pay my bills, I'm living, I'm not hungry, I'm not homeless. But how can we teach them to be the same citizens that we are? It has to come as a group, it has to come from each and every one of you. I'm sure there's a homeless person at every one of your wards, from out west to the lake, there's somebody sleeping somewhere in one of those alleys, in one of those abandoned buildings, in one of those parks.
In their car.
Somebody's sleeping in those tennis courts that you know they have the cover around them. I guarantee you, you walk in those parks and one of those tennis courts, and you're going to see somebody sleeping there. But how can we fix this as a whole without continuing to hurt people, continuing to tear people down? That's going to be the solution. The solution is going to be sustainability, a shelter that can sustain itself, a shelter that is putting good people back out into the community. Yes, all shelters are going to have issues. Winter Warming Center has the biggest issues, but you can ask Andrew Proctor, who came and told me, "I wasn't expecting this. I thought it was going to be people with needles in their arms, and doing this and doing that," and it's nothing like that. It's nothing like that at all. It's people that respect me. If I, if I walk out of a room, you can ask Juan, I took him to walk him down to St. John's to say, "Hey, we need to get this gate fixed, because the guys are going in there, going behind the rocks, they're leaving bottles." And I walked back in, and it was like 15 minutes later, and everybody's sitting there, and I'm like, "Why aren't they eating?" Because they were waiting on you to start dismissing the tables. So it's nothing like what you think. And I challenge each and every one of you to come visit the Winter Warming Center this year. Get to know the people that you're making decisions about. You're making decisions about people that you know nothing about, that you're just judging them off of what you see. So I ask you today to support us in getting a shelter that's 365 days a year, that's entry level, that can help them build up to get to the next level, to go to the next shelter, to where they can work on sobriety and other things. We have guys that have gotten sober in the Winter Warming Center, and they're doing great. One of them is actually our receptionist. He's been sober for two years now. So these are the type of people that we want to turn back into our community, into our city, but we have to do it as a group. One person can't do it, the mayor can't do it by himself, and the social service agencies can't either. So I just challenge you all to start meeting, coming up with a plan, and let's, let's turn our community back into good people who support each other. Thank you.
That said, I believe that everyone's had their chance, it's been a very...
Chris, I'd like for the new Salvation Army Director, Mr. Ford, to come and introduce themselves, because Captain Josh Stansberry has since left, so we have a new Salvation Army Director.
Very well.
So I'm Archie Ford, supportive services for veterans and family. One thing that wasn't touched on today, well, I do have a vision that this will all work out, and it'll be nice and spiritual, but we got a long way to go to get there. But one thing that wasn't addressed is that, even if every homeless person right now got motivated to go to a shelter, we don't have enough beds.
And like you said, I'm Captain Jeff Eddy, I've been in, resident of Springfield now for 10 days. And this is a monumental problem, and we're ready in any way we can, we're focused on making people better in any way we can do that. I know that, I don't know a lot about what's happened in the past, I know that we've tried things, and they haven't worked, and, and where we're at now is searching for what is going to work. And we are ready to come to the table and do anything that we can to make Springfield a better place. And so, I look forward to engaging in that conversation with everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At the moment, we have a motion on the floor for the consent agenda and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Sinore.
No.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
No.
Alderman DeCenso.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Aye.
Alderman Thailand.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Five-five, Mayor does not vote, he is not part of the committee, so it fails for lack of a majority.
Stays in committee.
It either stays in committee, or there can be a secondary motion for the debate agenda, or to leave in committee.
I'll make a motion, put it on the debate agenda.
Second motion.
We have a motion for the debate agenda and a second. I think we'll dispose of, and go, the formalities and go straight to roll call vote. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Sinore.
No.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
No.
Alderman DeCenso.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Aye.
Alderman Thailand.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Five-five. Once again, not enough to get it out of committee, for lack of any other, yes, Alderman Redpath.
I encourage the mayor to... I encourage the mayor to use your executive power to post that area anyway. The split vote on the city council was five to five, but the right thing to do is to keep it safe for the citizens who want to use the library. Thank you.
And with that, I believe the ordinance, 2018-320. Alderman, Willman Turner?
I understand Alderman Redpath's statement and why he made it, but I also just want to say that just the fact that the mayor brought this to the city, city council, obviously he was looking for some direction from us, and since it was a split vote, that means that there is, there, there was not clear direction to move in that, to move forward with posting unless there was some plan in place. I don't think, I don't think any of the, and I, I guess I'm taking a lot of liberty speaking for the five people that voted no. I don't think any of us are saying that it's not a safety issue and that something needs to happen to correct the problems around the library. I think that what those five people were saying is that we have to have a clear direction moving forward and not just moving people a few feet north. So I would...
Or anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that was just a, you know, an anecdotal, anecdotal statement. So I, I think that I would encourage the mayor to put together a working group, like he has done, that has been successful in other problem areas, put together a working group to be very strategic and very steadfast in working towards a long-term solution.
Alderman Proctor?
I echo that. We've heard a lot of solutions in this room because of this discussion, and I think there will be, and we've been working on a lot of these solutions too, and the dialogue will continue. And I hope, and I agree that I think a working group would be great to be established to start solidifying some of these things that have been discussed. And so a proper ordinance with proper funding can be brought forward to work with social service groups and the city leading the charge. And if there's such a group established, I'd like to be a part of it.
Mr. Mayor, if you do establish that group, I would like to be a part of it.
Sure. Appreciate everybody's comments, the public and the council. And just like everything, we're here to solve problems, and I take everybody's comments into consideration. But there is a working group. We haven't been sitting by the sidelines, so we'll continue to move forward in that direction with a small working group, but when it's time to expand it, we will. But again, it's, I think Renetta and others hit the nail on the head. It's a community-wide issue. It's just not a city council issue. It's not an alderman or the mayor or social services. It's all of us working together. So what we need to do is, you know, you know, I'll just get on my soapbox real quick, because this happens a lot, you know, with social media, I think things get exasperated a lot when issues come up, and then everybody says, we have to solve this. We have to solve this. Well, like everybody pointed out, the, the solution is not moving people, so you can't see them. And that's been Springfield's issue for a long time. And, you know, I've been around for a long time. The individual that started Helping Hands was my father. So that was one of the first overnight shelters in Springfield. And so it's near and dear to my heart, but it's about making sure we have solutions. So whenever, you know, you get those calls for individuals, you have to take that, sometimes with a grain of salt, because we're here to solve problems, and the long time, or long-term solution is to be a holistic approach, and that's why Sergeant Castle's brought the hot team from Kansas here, and we'll continue to work towards that. So it's not that work hasn't been done. Continuum of Care has been working on this for a long period of time. But again, it's just like any project, just like the Y, just like moving the Salvation Army. You have to put the pieces in place, because once you roll it out, there's going to be dissenters. And so you have to make sure you have it airtight, roll it out, and then everybody should get behind it and move forward. And that's, we're going to move forward in that positive direction. It'll be all encompassing, but it's how do you get to that success? And that's the challenge, because that's the challenge. Alderman Redpath's been around a while. You know how projects come forward, and, you know, right when you roll them out, you know, it depends on if the person likes it or not. So we're going to make sure we move in that progression to make sure that we have a successful project wherever the case may be. And I'll go back to what I just said. We have the overflow shelter right there, but Renetta worked six months. I mean, they could tell you how many hours. I mean, we don't have the resources with regards to proper staffing of that type of facility. But if we did, that'd be open tomorrow if we had the financial resources to make that happen. So, you know, again, I challenge everybody to make sure they let their federal legislators know the importance of it. The state legislators know the importance of it, because we've heard the importance of it right here tonight. So we have to move forward in that direction together. We will resolve it. It's just a matter of time.
Okay. That said, I'm closing discussion on 2018-322. It remains in committee. Mr. Chairman, would you like to take 2018-325 out of order? No, let's keep in numerical order, please. 2018-323, an ordinance to increase the number of class D liquor licenses by one for JBMP Pizza LLC DBA Rosades located at 2936 South Sixth Street.
So move for consent?
Second.
Motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Noted. 2018-324, an ordinance appointing Dave Robinson to the Springfield Economic Development Commission.
Motion for consent?
Normally, we do debate.
Motion for debate.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the debate agenda. Are there any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, this appointment replaces Mr. Brad Shively. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did Mr. Brad Shively submit a resignation letter when he resigned?
Yes, he did.
Would you share that with the council?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 2018-325, an ordinance amending chapter 97 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding section 97.11 prohibiting the use of tobacco products on the Lincoln Library grounds. A motion?
I make a motion. We leave in committee.
Second.
I guess we can take a vote on that, but this was actually the lesser of the two evils.
Does that motion supersede discussion, Corporation Council, or can we have discussion on that?
You, you may discuss the motion before you, which is to leave it in committee.
Right.
There's a motion to leave it in committee and a second, but now discussion. Alderman Redpath?
I, I support the ordinance, but I, I'm kind of confused. How we, if we, if we put this in place, how are we going to enforce it? I mean, we're going to have the smoky police down there, or what?
It's more that during the daytime hours that, that this came forward from me when I contacted the mayor's office. It is to prevent people from having chewing tobacco inside during the library hours. It's to keep people from standing in front of the doors, smoking. You've got some employees who go right outside the back doors, and they smoke right next to the building. A lot of times, the 15-foot rule from the state isn't being observed. This would allow the security guard to tell the people that they have to go across the street to smoke, or that they can't have the dip inside. They can't vape while they're inside. This is more, this, this has very little to do with the homeless issue. This is more about operating hours.
Can't they do that without an ordinance?
I think with the location, you got two churches on each corner, and then you got the municipal building over here. So I, I don't, I think it would be more confusing and, and very hard to enforce, because we just, like Alderman Turner alluded to, we'd just be pushing them somewhere else. So I don't know how we can enforce this one.
That's my concern, too, is the enforcement side of the question.
Alderman Turner?
And couldn't, and why can't it, in lieu of a new ordinance, why can't the restrictions that go along with the statewide smoking ban be enforced? Because there are restrictions about where you can, about the distance in doorways and those kinds of things. So why can't those be enforced instead of enacting a new ordinance?
Can I ask, Alderman, I don't know. Is there, is there restrictions in that statute or whatever about chewing tobacco and that kind of thing? I don't know. I'm just asking, because I...
No, I think it's just basically smoke.
It's cigarette smoke within 15 feet of doorways. But in a lot of cases, people are, the argument has been vaping isn't smoking. So you end up having some people who are vaping, and they think they don't have to go outside the 15 feet. That's come up in discussion a couple of times in the, in the last five years as well.
Is vaping part of the smoking ordinance? I didn't think it was.
It was not addressed, because at the time vaping wasn't...
I don't think there was really vaping going on back then.
No. Vaping wasn't a thing yet.
No.
So it's not part of the indoor ban unless, unless it's posted in most places. Most places are starting to treat vaping just like smoking.
So that would be something that the library would have to do by themselves, or do we have to do this as an ordinance? That'd be something that would come under the heading of what the library would do. No vaping, no smoking, no chewing tobacco. That's...
Corporation Council?
The, the difficulty is that that does not constitute a ordinance violation. In other words, if Will would post something and a police officer, it becomes more effective if we want something that's actually enforceable. Therefore, this being an ordinance has really a force of law that not necessarily an administrative directive might have, but just to address, I think, a question that Alderman Tylin raised, this, this goes beyond just the smoking, but also addresses the cigarettes and some of the other issues that are not addressed in the state law. But it is a policy decision. You know, it's, it's a policy decision.
Any further discussion? There's a motion.
Real quick, what's the, what's the rule on the, on the vaping inside? Is that, I, I thought that was just like smoking, not covered by the...
It's not. Anybody can... I don't know if the state's addressed it yet.
I will be happy to confirm that. My understanding is it is not addressed under the existing state law. But I will, I will check that and let you know.
I mean, if you guys would feel more comfortable with saying, saying that this is for the light, for the building itself, I'd be happy to move forward with a friendly amendment on it to limit tobacco use inside the library building completely, if you're uncomfortable with dealing with the grounds at this time, and we can deal with that at a later date.
I would second that motion.
Well, well, the other thing, if, if we should, again, we should apply it to all our, our buildings. We need to be consistent here. We cannot have one building where you can't smoke right, right out, or you can vape inside, another building where you can. That's, that, it, it makes it harder on, on the people that have to enforce it. We got to be consistent. That, that was the only reason why I voted for the, for the, the other ordinance, was because for consistency across the board in our properties. That's, that's what it's about. Now, a park, obviously, you can, you should be able to smoke out in a park, whatever. But, but in our buildings, in our buildings, that should not be tolerated.
The, the inspiration for this came from being at a number of parks. I'm sure that you've had to go to a number of them with your, your children. The parks have recently gone to the play areas and the, some of the other areas where the kids are, are at, and they've gone with signs that say that this is a kid's zone. It's a tobacco-free zone. So like, if you go to the playground area, or you go to the dugout area of the Little League Diamonds, the sign is posted right there that this is a tobacco-free zone. And that was kind of where I, where this started from, going to the library. And it wasn't homeless people that was the issue. It was normal people out there, standing in front of the door, four or five of them, smoking. And, and you've got, you had a couple of older people who turned around, and they were so pissed about it. The one old guy asked the kid to stop. The kid ignored him, so the old, old guy and the old lady walked around to the other entrance to avoid them. And then inside the library, I witnessed two different people who had their cups, walking around, chewing tobacco, spitting into the cup. The one cup had to be at least half full, and all it would take is that guy setting his cup down and knocking it over. And we just spent how much money renovating that library? That's kind of the direction of this. This had very little to do with the homeless, which is why I was very, very disconcerned that it got tied to the other ordinance, that the two of them got put together, because it's actually two separate things. Alderman Turner?
Well, there, there is a statewide smoking ban, so if it would help to, if it would help to illuminate the subject, I think that Alderman Hanauer has a, has a point. If you would, if you were to bring an amendment or another ordinance that made all of the city buildings a no smoking, no dipping, no vaping zone, then I think everyone could support that.
Alderman Redpath?
Good points on both sides of the aisle on this. And the thing is, is that since you just brought this amendment up tonight for new ordinance, maybe we ought to leave it in committee and think it through a little bit, because I do think there's support from the council to move in that direction. But Rob hit it on the head. We have to have some consistency. So why don't we hold it?
Then I guess I would ask for the next, next committee in two weeks. Could we have an ordinance, amendment prepared to make all the city buildings tobacco-free?
And vape, I'd like to...
Tobacco and vape.
And, and, and have input...
Just the same language here.
If other aldermen have input, to get ahold of you and put it in your ordinance, okay?
Absolutely. And that's, that's the whole goal, is to go that direction. So if we could have that amendment for two weeks, that would be great. And I think that ends the ordinance portion of our agenda. I am not setting any records for the fastest meeting time, that's for sure.
That's a good...
Let's see here. We are now at unfinished business. I will open to the alderman first. Any alderman with unfinished business? Alderman Redpath?
Corporation Council, would you have an update for us on our Walmart parking problem?
They, they have submitted an updated plan, and they have, interestingly, and without getting into too much detail, they have indicated that they may actually close that area of the parking lot, because they have actually received a proposal to buy part of the parking lot to build a new building. So that would cover that area. We've asked for details on that, but have not received that yet.
So that would resolve the issue, because there would be a building there.
Come in my ward office.
All right. The other alderman with unfinished business?
I have a raccoon out there over there.
I would like to bring up an item of unfinished business, the city-county softball game, due to two different reasons. One, there was a, there was some concern over possible heat issues with this coming Sunday. We've had some heat records, some temperature warnings and other things, heat advisories. And then there was also the issue that apparently the Park District thinks a lot more of our athletic ability than I do. They wanted us to use 90-foot bases. I honestly think the only way that would have happened is if we had a rest stop somewhere between First and Elm. And that's not just for the county, although they would use it more than we would.
Absolutely.
However, we are moving the game to September. There's a proposed date of September 16th. The county is meeting on it tonight to discuss that date as well. It would be Sunday, September 16th. The county has proposed making it a more family-friendly event, because we would not have the sliders, and it would not be at Robin Roberts Stadium. It would possibly be at Lincoln Park. They've talked about putting a committee together, larger than just the four of us that have been meeting, and looking at, including a bounce house, and having someone there who's selling concessions to raise money for the Honor Flight, as well as having some items donated, maybe some giveaways, raffles, other things of that nature. Julia, you're being voluntold to be put on the committee. Your, your youngest brother said that you'd love to be on it, so...
He's not the boss of her.
And then I'm looking for one other volunteer from the alderman to join me and Tim Griffin and Julia on the... and Julia on the committee from the city side.
Rob Hanauer should be on there.
I second it. So do we have another volunteer from the aldermen?
I'll do it.
Kristen, you're, you're on board. There's our four. And that said, we are definitely looking forward to making this a bigger event, even though we will not have the sliders game attached.
And really, I don't want presents since it's my birthday that day, anyway.
Happy birthday.
It's off, it's his anniversary that day, so that's.
I'll be 42.
Lies.
All right. Is there any other unfinished business before we move on to new business? New business, Alderman Donlin.
Well, speaking of birthdays, someone in this room yesterday celebrated a big one and I won't tell you what, how many it's been, but happy birthday. Happy birthday, Tim Griffin, 60.
Happy birthday.
And Mr. Chairman, I've also been asked to remind the community that this Saturday, the American Cancer Society, Salmon County Relay for Life is being held out at the fairgrounds at the Exposition Building. The survivor's brunch begins at 9:00 AM. The relay is from noon to 10:00 PM. Thank you.
Very good. Any other new business? Alderman D'Scenzo, then Proctor.
Two things, weather permitting, I will be guest conducting the municipal band this Sunday at Southwind Park. I have this ability in my back pocket, so everyone come out and watch. Second, on a more serious note, overnight in Ward 6 on Princeton and Ninth, a towing company went up and the residents are not happy about it, to say the least. So right in the middle of the neighborhood, there's a new tow yard. And it's not illegal. There are some issues with the fencing and they've already been cited because of it, but you can imagine their dismay of waking up in the morning and tow trucks barreling through with cars attached to them and right in the middle of the neighborhood. That was, that was my response.
Is that for business?
It's zoning.
Is that for business?
It's, it's, it's zoned appropriately.
Is the road rated to handle the trucks?
I'm not sure what is zoned, but it was sold and they started business, I mean, immediately.
Director Mahoney's coming up.
Everything you said is correct. It's zoned industrial, so it's that industrial on the tracks through there. The fence was not approved, they put it in for a permit, it was denied and they put it up anyway. We've cited him, it's going through the process, as you know, it's going to go to legal, so there's not much more we can do really at this point.
Yeah, so you'll get it. Yep. So that trumps your parking problem.
Alderman Proctor.
Just really quick, this weekend is the Amherst Apple Fest in downtown Springfield, so I hope you all come down, enjoy that. Yeah, there you go. And then, secondly, a couple of months back, probably almost a year ago, I asked for an ordinance regarding the, the first responders program that we have in Enos Park Tiff for, for housing assistance. And I asked that, that we consider amending that to include veterans because we are very close to Camp Lincoln, Enos Park, and I'm sure the Far East Tiff would like to experience this too. So I'd like an ordinance to be drafted that, for the first responders program, that veterans be considered for that program as well.
And would you, would you please add the Far East Tiff to that ordinance and add me as a co-sponsor?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Saturday, the, I believe the Governor's Mansion's ribbon cutting is at 10:30, so I think all are invited to go there.
Okay. I had one other item, Will, with the library. I believe there's been some exciting, some exciting news about the reading program. You guys are setting some record numbers over there and I'd like to remind the aldermen that, and the public, that there is an adult reading program as well this year. You go over, you sign up on the third floor for the adult reading program. There are gift cards and other prizes that you can submit for, but the kids program is the one that's, where the numbers are really high.
Yeah, so we've actually had over 1,000 participants already in the program, which beats what last year already is. So if you haven't come down, please help support us. We're trying to make our goal of 10,000 hours where our goal is to get 1,200 participants, so we could really use you guys to come down and help support it and turn in some hours. I got some unturned in hours, so you're not the only one. But we'd love to get to our goal of 10,000 hours and hopefully we can do that. So we're really excited and it's been a great program. We had, you guys missed Nitro Joe today, who was actually go ahead and he was doing a program with, it's like a chemistry program. They freeze dried a banana and smashed it, so that was lots of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie, Mayor?
I'll show you. Okay. This weekend, you will notice that they're already in town, coming in town now. We have the American Legion coming in for their 100th anniversary. Freedom Fest is Friday evening over on Adam Street. I believe it starts at 5:00. It's open to the public, there'll be food and drink available. So let's all go out and support and celebrate with our veterans and welcome to Springfield. Thank you.
Mayor, did you have another item?
That was it.
Okay. If there is, Alderman Turner?
So I know that over the last few weeks, the, there's been some, a lot of, kind of, well, not negative, but quasi-negative things said about the Convention Bureau. And I just want to say that I had some visitors this weekend and we were looking for something to do, well, through the week, and we did the Abe's Hat Hunt. And if you have not done it, you really should. It's, it's a great way to visit 10 of the local sites and it's, it's educational fun. And we ran into a lot of like enactors and other things along the way, so it was a great, it was a great, like four or five hours that went by very quickly. So if you have not done the Abe's Hat Hunt, make sure that you do. And I stopped by the Convention and Tourism Bureau to let them know that we had done it and to tell them how, you know, how great it was. Make sure you do it.
Thank you. Alderman McMiniman?
If anyone needs a meal, there's still a few vendors selling meals at Bites on the Boulevard.
Probably not.
On South MacArthur.
Really? This late?
The food's probably all gone.
Just about sold out, I checked.
Yes. I can guarantee it's sold out.
The restaurants are already closed.
That said.
Is that tonight?
So moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no. I've actually been, there's been later ones. October 7 is our other alternate day. We'll see. All right. Try and, well, I'll get Julia and Kristen and we'll have our.
Hello.
I got you. I'll see if I can push it.